At the Pembroke Pines Charter School West. And if you would, please stand for the pledge and the national anthem. Whenever you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Oh, say can you see by the dawn's early light what so proudly we hailed at the twilight's last gleaming? Whose broad stripes and bright stars through the perilous fight o'er the ramparts we watched were so gallantly streaming? And the rocket's red glare, the bombs bursting in air, gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say, does that star-spangled banner yet wave? O'er the land of the free and the home of the brave?
Wow. What a beautiful job. Thank you so very, very much. Beautiful, beautiful, beautiful. Let me acknowledge the presence of former mayor Frank Ordus, who's here. Thank you. It is by, uh, by custom and practice that once a year, a state-of-the-city address is delivered to the residents of the city of Pembroke Pines, and today is that day. So, if you will permit me. Good evening. I want to take this opportunity to speak with you for a few minutes, take a quick look back over this past year, and to look forward to exciting opportunities that lie ahead for our city and the vision we all share to ensure we remain a thriving and exciting city in which to live. Serving as your mayor this past year is not only, has not only been rewarding, it's honestly been the best job that anyone could ever wish for, giving back to a community that I love and meeting the challenges as we face together. I'm grateful for your support and very thankful to our city commission for their constant leadership. Also to our department leaders, our city manager and his staff, the dedicated employees who keep this city running every day. And of course, I'm thankful to all of you who make Pembroke Pines what it is. While I'll always be honest about where the, where we are as a city, I want to start by saying this. We have a lot to be proud of. We're a community that works together, that speaks up and shows up. And despite the challenges we face, we continue to find ways to serve our residents better, build smarter, and move forward. Let's take a moment to reflect on what we accomplished as a city in 2024. The city continues to distinguish itself as a model of fiscal excellence, having received recently an upgrade to our already high bond rating, a clear reflection of our steadfast financial stewardship and strategic leadership. For almost 10 years straight, the city has successfully maintained or reduced tax rates, demonstrating a sustained commitment to placing residents at the forefront of delivering uncompromised, high-quality services. Our strong financial reserves further underscore the city's resilience, enabling continued investment in innovation, redevelopment, and long-term community advancement. Most importantly, the city remains deeply committed to transparency and accountability in all financial matters. In addition to establishing an office of the commission auditor, the city formed a citizens' budget council comprised of residents to review municipal finances and provide recommendations, reflecting our commitment to full transparency in the stewardship of public funds. This ensures that every decision is made with integrity and in the best interest of the community we are honored to serve. Our Pembroke Pines Police Department continues to lead with results. Major crimes are down 5%. Traffic fatalities are down 27%, and traffic accidents are down 4%. They've also doubled community patrols and cut open positions in half. That's a real impact when it matters most, on our streets and in our neighborhoods. The Pembroke Pines Fire Rescue Department nearly doubled the number of citizens trained in CPR, improving emergency preparedness across the city. They've also maintained fire loss ratios well below the national averages and are consistently identifying ways to enhance and the quality of their service. This is the kind of performance and dedication that protects lives. In utilities, we completed critical water and infrastructure upgrades in the Pines Village neighborhood, bringing improved service, better fire protection capacity, and greater reliability to our residents. We also implemented a chemical odor control system at the wastewater treatment plant, reducing sewer gases by over 99%. We also now have a plan of action to remove PFAS from our water, timely with EPA deadlines for taking this important decision. Our charter schools are A-rated and nationally recognized, and they celebrated 25 years of service to the community. But more importantly, they had another banner year. In 2024 alone, they maintained a 100% graduation rate and continued to send students to top-tier colleges across the country. These are not just schools. They're launchpads for bright futures. Our building department issued 9,300 permits with nearly $300 million in job value, including 2,100 residential re- roofs and 188 residential certificates of occupancy. Our planning and economic development team delivered a wide range of residential, medical, and industrial projects in 2024, from the Merrick Square townhomes to the new affordable housing for seniors. We're adding housing options at all levels. We saw Memorial open their state-of-the-art Cancer Institute, and in the coming year Baptist, HCA, and Memorial will expand emergency care access across the city. And with Summit Development's new 280,000-square-foot industrial project breaking ground, we're positioning ourselves to attract new industries and jobs. I want to say this. Pembroke Pines is not a city that's growing outward. We're building out. We're built out. But we are a city that's changing and redeveloping, because if you're not moving forward, you're moving backward. And in Pembroke Pines, we choose to move forward. That's exactly why we created a clear path to guide our progress. On December 4th, 2024, the Pembroke Pines City Commission unanimously adopted a strategic plan. We Love Pembroke Pines: A Blueprint for a Brighter Future. This plan was built, was not built behind closed doors. Over five years in the making, it came together with extensive input from residents, staff, community partners, and master planning documents. It lays out our roadmap across seven strategic focus areas: economic development, public safety, public infrastructure, communication and marketing, environmental sustainability, workforce development and support, public spaces, community aesthetics, and quality of life. It's bold, but it's practical, and it reflects the values and priorities of our community. Whether it's revitalizing aging infrastructure, enhancing recreational spaces, investing in workforce development, or building trust through better communication, this plan guides how we make decisions and allocate resources. Now, as many of you know, one of the tools we proposed to help fund the project within the strategic plan was a $230 million general obligation bond. That referendum was held on March 11th, and it did not pass. Let me be clear. We respect the will of the voters. We communicated the plan, the need, and the proposed projects. Residents simply made a different choice, and that's democracy. But let me also be clear about this. The work does not stop. The plan still moves forward. And with the support of the commission and the creativity of our administration, we will continue to pursue other funding opportunities, whether that's through grants, public-private partnerships, or phased investment strategies. So what's next? We're doubling down on our strategic priorities, the seven areas that define our future. We're working on smarter traffic solutions, adjustable lighting based on real-time activity, more efficient public communication, more transparency in how your tax dollars are spent. We're prioritizing workforce excellence, attracting and retaining top-tier employees to ensure our city's services remain second to none. We're addressing the PFAS issue in our water system. Clean water isn't optional. It's fundamental. And we're going to use every tool, technology, federal support, grant, what have you, to make sure we stay ahead of the curve. And we're not forgetting about our parks. You've told us what matters. You like pickleball, and you want walking paths. And it's not just about recreation. It's also about building community and maintaining our competitive edge on property values and quality of life. We enjoy a community that's transparent, that listens, and that delivers, however we can, as fast as we can, with whatever tools we've got. We know the road ahead isn't without obstacles. Inflation is still affecting project costs. Competition for talent remains fierce. And many of our older neighborhoods need reinvestment. There are many imponderables on our horizon. But here's the truth. We're not standing still. We communicated our vision and our needs clearly. And even when plans are delayed, we remain undeterred. We've all learned from the process, and we'll continue to listen, adapt, and lead. We are a city that doesn't get discouraged. We adjust. We push forward, because that's what great cities do. And that's what this community deserves. So where do we go from here? We stay the course. We continue to build a city we're proud to call home. We act with urgency, with honesty, and with purpose. We get creative. We adapt. We improvise. And we overcome. Because we are that city that cares, a city that can and a city that does. And as long as I have the honor of serving as your mayor, together with the fine leaders elected to serve our city with me and the outstanding residents and businesses, all proud to call Pembroke Pines their home, I'll keep pushing for progress, for fairness, and for results that speak for themselves. Lastly, I'm very excited about the creation of the We Love Pembroke Pines nonprofit organization. This is a new addition to the city that will harvest the volunteerism and goodwill of Pembroke Pines residents and businesses and direct it to humanitarian and community improvement efforts citywide. People of all ages will contribute to the vibrancy of our city by helping our own people who encounter hardships in life and also by engaging in projects citywide to improve our quality of life, because everyone in our city matters. I'm so thankful to our city commission for embracing this important, yet until now, missing component in our city. We look forward to receiving a business plan for the nonprofit soon, which we will implement, working with schools, our staff, community organizations, volunteers from throughout the city, our faith-based and business partners and others, to grow this new initiative and to bring it into full effect. I wish to encourage every resident and business in our city to learn more about We Love Pembroke Pines and to take joy in becoming a stakeholder in its success. Thank you. The official motto of our city is "Join us and progress with us." Never have those words or that sentiment been more important. Let's keep moving forward together. Thank you very much. Okay. Announcements to be pulled from the agenda?
No items, Mayor.
I'd like to pull them.
From the agenda? No, not yet.
Okay.
That was like withdrawing.
Okay.
Okay. Okay, so we, our first presentation today is to announce the winners of the District 3 Natalie Belmonte Great Yards Awards for March 2025. Mr. Stan, will you come forward? And also Commissioner, will you join me?
All right. Mayor, tonight we have with us, uh, this is a hard one. I don't want to butcher it again, the Walkanoki family? Walkanaki fam, Walkanaki family from District 3. And as you can see, uh, their yard is just outstanding.
Oh, wow.
So we are extremely proud to, uh, award them the Natalie Belmonte Great Yard Award for District 3 for this month.
I have to tell you that that, uh, you must be the District 3 Walkanokis, because I got to tell you, that, that, that picture belongs on a, on a magazine. It's just beautiful. So what's your secret?
Well, I have to tell you, I am an original owner. I built my house in 1978.
Wow.
So in 2020, I'll be here 50 years.
50 years in Pembroke Pines. That's fantastic.
I still love my house, and I still love my city.
It's, it's, that's, that's what's important.
I take pride in my house, and because I do, I'm constantly working to keep it up. But my daughter and granddaughter help me in the garden.
Wow. I was about to say, do they help?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
The flowers frequently, we change them.
It makes all the difference that you take the initiative and the work. Eh, I bet you enjoy it too. And, and it lifts, it lifts up, it brings hummingbird.
Yeah.
But it also, it also brings joy to the people who live around you, and you're a good neighbor, and we're very, very thankful to you. Commissioner?
Yeah, just, we have a certificate for you as well as $50, split between the three of you, not so much, but. More flowers. Okay, good to know. And I have a question. Did you match the house to the flowers or the flowers to the house? Because very great on the color coordination there.
Uh, no, they, they change every season.
Got it. And I love that it's a family affair. This is a great way to connect with family, and I, that's amazing. Well, thank you so much for bringing in the family into this great project and for showing the rest of Pembroke Pines how it's done in District 3.
My daughter Jennifer Venus, that's her last name, is a teacher in Pembroke Pines.
Really? Which school?
Oh, sorry, Hollywood.
She's in Hollywood. She was in Pembroke Pines, she went to. But she's a teacher. And that's what matters.
Walter C. Young.
Wow. Fantastic. In Pembroke Pines. That's in Pembroke Pines. Well, thank you, thank you, thank you very much, and let's take a photo.
Mayor, we'll be back next month with District 4's Great Yard winner. And there's a QR code up here. If you have somebody you'd like to nominate for a great yard, please do so. Thank you, Mayor.
Please make those nominations. Thank you so much. Okay, and now we have, uh, Cynthia Reynoso, are you here?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. This is Child Abuse Prevention Month. So this is a proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines for Child Abuse Prevention Month. Whereas Florida's bright futures depend on the healthy development and well-being of its children, and adverse childhood experiences such as adult abuse and neglect can lead to severe and long-lasting consequences for children, families, and society. Whereas every child has the right to a safe, healthy, and happy childhood. And research shows that parents and caregivers with support systems and access to resources are more resilient and better equipped to provide nurturing environments. And whereas the Children's Services Council of Broward County supports families by funding family support programs that stabilize families in crisis, promote positive parenting, prevent out-of-home placements, and reduce involvement in the dependency system. And whereas Broward Aware is a county-wide campaign led by the Children's Services Council and its partners, it raises awareness of child abuse prevention through community engagement and promotion of healthy child development and parenting practices. Now therefore, I, Angelo Castillo, mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, and on behalf of the city commission, to hereby proclaim April 2025 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in the city of Pembroke Pines, and I encourage all residents to join in future efforts to support the well-being of children and families. Congratulations.
Thank you for joining, thank you for joining the campaign and for keeping children safe. I love Pembroke Pines.
Yes. There you go. Fantastic. Okay. Next, we have Arbor Day 2025. Commissioner Good, would you join me, please? Is he here? Oh, he went in the back. Vice Mayor, would you join me? Did you get the Arbor Day one? Nice. This is a proclamation of the city of Pembroke Pines Arbor Day 2025. Whereas Arbor Day is celebrated, celebrates the importance of trees and their essential role in our community health, environment, and quality of life. And whereas the city recognizes the invaluable benefits of urban forestry, including the creation of green spaces, the reduction of urban heat islands, and the improvement of overall community well-being. And whereas Arbor Day serves as an opportunity to raise awareness about the importance of trees in mitigating climate change, conserving natural resources, and promoting biodiversity. And whereas the residents of the city of Pembroke Pines are encouraged to observe Arbor Day by planting and caring for trees, supporting local tree-related activities, and fostering a culture and environmental responsibility for the benefit of all. Now therefore, I, Angelo Castillo, mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, along with the city commission, and in accordance with National Arbor Day, do hereby proclaim April 25th, 2025, as Arbor Day in the city of Pembroke Pines, Florida. Arbor Day.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Mayor, thank you. The city continues to be a Tree City USA. We're very proud of that designation, and my team works hard, along with public services, to plant trees every single day in this community. Uh, we'll be doing a tree giveaway very shortly. Keep everybody in the notice about that. And, uh, later today, we have a great presentation to recognize our Arbor Day poster contest winners. We'll bring them all up here in just a moment. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. And Commissioner Rodriguez, if you will join me? And I will ask you to read this proclamation, if you would.
City Pembroke Pines Food Waste Prevention Week. Whereas up to 35% of all food purchased is, produced is wasted, even though much of it is safe and nutritious and could feed those in need. And whereas everyone benefits from better utilizing food resources, creating stronger and more sustainable communities. And whereas a family of four can save between $1,866 and $3,000 per year, per year by reducing wasted food. And whereas K through 12 schools and universities play a crucial role in educating the next generation on the importance of reducing, recovering, and recycling food. And whereas we have the opportunity to conserve shared resources such as land, water, and energy that are used to produce and transport food that ultimately goes uneaten. And whereas food in landfills decomposes slowly, releasing methane gas, a potent contributor to climate change.
Now therefore, I, Angelo Castillo, mayor of the city of Pembroke Pines, along with the city commission, do hereby proclaim April 7th through 13th, 2025, as Food Prevention Week in the city of Pembroke Pines, and encourage all residents to commit to reducing food waste in their homes, workplaces, and communities. Congratulations.
Are presenting this to one of our environmental advisory board members, Claudia, and, oh, I'll hold it, because I think she has a couple of comments to make as well.
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. Please excuse my voice, as I'm a little bit hoarse today. But as a public health graduate student, as well as the member of the environmental advisory board, I want to thank you for shedding light on this important topic. As Commissioner Rodriguez mentioned, every year, millions of pounds of edible food ends up in landfills, contributing to greenhouse gas emissions and increasing the use of resources such as water, energy, and labor. So by minimizing food waste, our city can combat climate change, address insecurity, and support our local businesses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. When I, when I was a kid, there was no food waste. My mother was, was, was very good about making sure that everything got, got eaten. And she had all kinds of creative ways of making sure that that happened. It skipped a generation, but we have to get back to it. So thank you very, very much. Oh, take a picture. Oh, poster contest. Commissioners, will you all join me for the poster contest?
So Mayor, every year, we host the Arbor Day Poster Contest. And this year, we have our winners. They all have their certificates. Could you all come up with your certificates?
Wow.
Come on up, come on up. Mayor, while that's going on, we've got a presentation going on on the screen. We had a bunch of schools participate. Their artwork will be shown up here. But their work is also on display in the lobby inside the great, uh, city center, so.
You did a beautiful job. All right, let's take a photo. Okay, thank you very much.
Mayor, this program is done with our environmental advisory board, who also judges the projects.
Mayor, do you know if we're giving away the trees on, uh, for Pines Day? I know it's been kind of a tradition.
I don't know.
When the trees gonna be handing out, handing out to the public?
Charlie, know, know anything about trees being handed? Charlie, know anything about trees being handed out at Pines Day? Ms. Orinson?
Christina.
Are we having any trees handed out on Pines Day?
Mike might be handing them out on Pines Day, I'm not sure. He's outside with the kids. Yep.
Okay.
Thanks.
Items at the request of the public. I have one speaker signed up, Scott Barnett. Name and address to the record, please.
Hello, Scott Barnett, 19346 Southwest Fifth Street. Congratulations, everybody, on kind of entering a new era here in Pembroke Pines. I was at the previous visioning workshop, and I am a member of the Budget Advisory Council. And after listening to all of the commentary, I just wanted to make some simple comments about what we were listening to. This was a visioning workshop, which, in my head, is to envision what we're gonna do in the future. There was some commentary about a lot of the instability going on at the federal level, the hypotheticals at the state level. But as a great leader once said, sometimes, you know, we don't do things because they're easy, we do them because they're hard. There's a lot of hard things that we're gonna have to do moving forward, both this commission and the city. And I think what's important is, there were some talks of, well, let's pause, let's wait to see what happens, and that's understandable. But we also need to move forward in spite of everything that's going on, because of things at the state level are hypotheticals, the instability of the federal level. We understand all those things, but there are things that need to be done here in this city. And we were presented, and we worked together as a city on a strategic plan, and we need to move forward and find the funding for that, because I know nobody wants to increase military rates, nobody wants to talk about raising any kind of taxes. But if we are serious about achieving a lot of these things in the strategic plan, we need to find a way to make it happen, and the commission needs to give us an avenue to make that happen, and I know that you're going to do that. But we've been talking, you know, one of the issues was about the public safety building the police. Let's remember, that building was built in 1991, pre-hurricane Andrew. We need to support our local police and fire. We need to support the people who support us. So we can't keep kicking things down the road. We can't keep delaying things, and let's, hey, let's talk about it, let's think about it. We've been thinking and talking about it for the past 10 years. So all I say is, you know, we're hopefully gonna look forward to having meetings with the city, with the Budget Advisory Council, and talk about these issues and see what we can recommend to the city. But we need to make haste and move forward with this. So I'm just encouraging you, in spite of everything that's going on in the world, we still here in Pembroke Pines are strong. We're a strong city, and I feel that we can move forward on these issue with much haste. So thank you very much.
Thank you very, very much for your contributions. Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is the Commission Auditor Report.
Good evening, Commission. My name is Eddie Casanova, Senior Manager of the Commission Auditor's Office. The purpose for today's presentation is just to present to you the projects that were approved as part of our 2025 plan back in February, where the commission had some discussions with us on what projects they wanted to be implemented in this year's plan are noted above. We've done some preliminary work, reviewing contracts, inquiring of staff, just on all these projects to adequately price them. As we price per project, the overall budget for the 2025 plan is over the $255,000, as stated in our contract. So the reason for today's presentation or discussion, more should I say, is regarding that item. Should the commission want us to do all the projects that they approved back in February, they would have to increase our budget through an amendment. Obviously, we have to bring this to your attention, we can't just start work going over budget. And if the commission does decide not to go that avenue, we would like the commission to select the projects listed above, as to which could be eliminated in the current year, or perhaps pushed forward into the 2026 audit plan.
Commissioners, what's your pleasure? Vice Mayor?
There was input from everyone up here. I have no objection to what's on there, especially given the conversation as to oversight and checks and balances, and making sure that we're doing right by the taxpayers. So I would be okay with what I've seen here, even if it does require to increase it. It's an increase in oversight and efficiency, so I'm in favor of it.
Anyone else? Commissioner Good?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. So what is the budget amendment gonna require in terms of dollars, Mr. Manager?
Looks like about $100,000.
$102,000 is the difference.
For this year or for next fiscal year? What, when I hear you talk, what is it, this year or next fiscal year?
This year. 2025, this year.
And if you do all these projects, you're saying you're gonna get all these projects done this year?
Correct.
That is correct, and I want to reiterate, this is just the increase of the budget. We obviously bill as we progress through the projects. Sometimes things move into the next fiscal year. This is just the overall budget for the 2025 plan, not necessarily actual expenditures.
That made it a little more difficult for me. So this is $102,000, did you say? Is it $102,000 we would have to make a budget amendment for this year, Mr. Manager?
It would be $107,000.
Nope.
Their budget was $250,000.
$255,000.
It's $255,000.
Oh, was? I thought it was $250,000. So it would be $102,000 then.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at some of this here, and I, you know, I agree that, you know, that we want more done. I'm really kind of wanting to be focused on some of what our priorities are, to see what you're going to do. Too many projects, you just sort of said a little bit of it, could mean, well, we're not gonna get it all done, doesn't mean we're gonna bill you all that money. So I don't even know that, you know, if we're doing a budget amendment, I don't know what that means, or we don't know that we're going to incur the cost. And so when I look at this, the very first thing that hit me was, well, is this in priority order, or is this just everything was thrown onto the list? However it landed.
This is everything that was approved in the February meeting. The timeline, which is estimated timeline, is, I can bring it up here, by each project, when we anticipate the work to start, when it's to complete. We feel confident that all the projects can be completed in the current year, once approved, so we're not anticipating any delays. It's, I only said that statement as the reality of getting back and forth with the information that's provided, cooperation with the vendors, sometimes take some back and forth. That's all I meant by that comment.
So, and, you know, we've had a lot of conversation and things like that, and we do recognize that the company has been, the contract's essentially been assigned by a company that's acquired, you know, I can't even remember the name.
Forvis Mazars.
Right, thank you. And, you know, so, you know, there's trepidation with me, I, you all know it, and I'm gonna continue to be that way until I see a product. We haven't seen any products yet. And one of the things that's been constant is that it's been constant late stuff. And so asking us to go above a budget, to me, is a little bit difficult for me to bite that, and not even seeing a product of the new company. So in my eyes, I'm sitting here looking at this, saying, you know, can we prioritize the project to what our budget is for this year, and see what the results are by the end of this year? And see how that turns out, because we're, what, April, our year-end is September, right? We start a new year in October, so it's a couple of months. I'd like to see, and I'd like to see what the product is, before I sit there and say, let's just keep throwing additional dollars on something that we haven't tried yet. And I know that you all have convinced me that you're gonna do a very good job, but I still wanna be able to see that. So my recommendation is to not exceed the existing budget, and that we prioritize which one of these projects we'd like to see that fits what remains in the budget, because it looks like we're already $30,000 into the budget. Is that correct? So we really only have about $220,000 left, so we would just be picking projects up to the $220,000 level. And, you know, and I don't know if there's a way that we can do that now and prioritize, or maybe we can take this list, and we can go one, two, three, four, five, we can all rank them, one through whatever, and turn them in to the city manager, let them give it to staff, and just take the top, top projects that fall out of that, and once it gets to the 220 mark, you stop there and give them the authorization to move forward. That's my recommendation to this.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Thank you for the presentation. I did go through it, and I was able to speak to Eddie about the intricacies in all of it. I think I'm in agreeance with Commissioner Good in keeping it to the 255. From simply my perspective, and I was hoping that my colleagues could also help me in figuring this out, but I do, in prioritizing this here, because obviously, we're still, we're very much within a very tight timeframe for them to get this back to us by the end of the fiscal year. So I thought our goal today, coming in, was to prioritize it within the meeting, but the ranking system doesn't seem like a bad idea if we can get it done, you know, within the last couple, you know, within the next couple of hours or days. My personal perspective was that those bigger contracts that we have, including for Calvin, Jacobs, the Transportation Authority, Waste Pros, those are priorities, because those are some of the topics that we hit a little bit more often than not. I don't necessarily see the need of, at the moment, for the Compass Group Food Services. I was able to go to all of our schools, and I asked about our food services. I didn't hear any negative feedback from the principals when I did attend, so I don't know if that's at top priority, if that's something we can move on to the next year. As well as the same comments go for facility contract services, not something I've necessarily heard too much negative feedback on. Obviously, it's good to always continuously audit the contracts that we're in, but not necessarily so much for those. And then the two ERPs and the NIST assessment seems to me, from my personal perspective, that is something that we can push forward about, you know, for the next year, which technically is just a little bit further down the line, like the end of this year. So those are the products that I don't think are absolutely necessary for right now, but obviously, that's, I wanted to bring it up and see what your perspective was.
Can I go through that list again? So you said CGA, and which other ones?
So I said facility, if we're going down the line.
Facilities?
Facility Contract Services, Compass Group Food Services, ERP roles and permissions, ERP vendor management, and the NIST Assessment Part II. I actually did not add that up, so it might still be a little bit over, but.
Yeah, in anticipation, obviously, the commission wanted to go that route. We did identify some projects to get us under to that, under that 255, if the commission willed it. So we would, and in our estimation, we would be eliminating the Facility Contract Services audit, the Compass Group audit, the both ERP projects.
Because you've looked at them recently?
No, it has.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
The list is the upper end.
Okay. If we remove the Facility Contract Services, the Compass Group Food Service Audit, the, both the ERP vendor and roles and permission audits, the NIST Assessment Part II, and as well as getting rid of the commission-designated projects, where we always hold a budget for any commission-designated items that may come up, that will get us under the 255.
Mr. Mayor?
Mayor? Yes, hold on.
I think one of them is very critical to us, because it's coming up for consideration, and.
Which one?
OMI, that's Jacobs.
You want that one done?
We need it done sooner, not July. It needs to be done probably no later than May, so that needs to be a priority, because as you said, and we've worked on major projects that have expiration dates, and we're prepared to bring items before you, but the auditor has to review those.
Right.
So OMI is a very important one for us.
But OMI is still on your list, right?
Correct.
Yes, it is on the list.
You just wanna move it up?
If they have it further down, that they're not gonna complete it till July, and we really need to get that done in May, the other one I have a question on is the CGA. When is that up, Jonathan? So if we could work on those first, that would be important to us, if you don't have an order.
Okay. Let's hold on to that.
Regarding the building contract with CGA, that's due to expire in December, but we need that audit to be done by no later than June.
Because if, in fact, the commission decides to do something different, we need to prepare specifications, we need to offer a bid. So those two are critical ones for us, and that's what we'd like to see. If the commission has no objection to us selecting which ones that we need to get done in order to provide you with a recommendation on those from our commission auditor, that's what I would suggest. But as far as what they're recommending, I don't have an issue with.
I would like to add on that, we had also talked about the Transportation Authority one, and that one, I believe within their schedule, it looks fine to me, because we did need it, I think we said by the end of next summer?
Yes.
Was what we had it on. So it's in time, but I do know that that had some kind of time restraint as well.
If you give us the ability to work with the commission auditor, to do those that are critical, then that would be very helpful.
If they're coming up for discussion here, I think that that would be valid.
Just one second. Commissioner Schwartz?
Thank you. While this slide is up, if we take lobbyist review down, from lobbyists all the way to the bottom, we're at $100,000. If we could go to the timeline, back to the timeline. So I have no issue sharing with my colleagues the conversation I had with Mr. O'Keefe. I wanted to make sure that the majority of the heavy, the heavy vendors that have a significant amount of dollars going back and forth are completed before first reading of budget. That was my initial thought. Now, as far as, as far as taking those big contracts off the table, I'm just not comfortable doing that. There is, there is an absolute need for our commission auditor to have, to have a review of, it just happens to be Commissioner Good, all these big ones are here in this year. I mean, normally, it's not a workload that our commission auditor usually has, but we've got the big, heavy hitters here. So with respect to FCS, it's imperative that they're included early and completed early, CGA, early, completed early.
Excuse me, you said FCS to be completed?
Yeah, Facility Contract Services, yeah, FCS.
Okay, because that's one of the projects that we would have to eliminate to drop down to the.
Well, again, if we're looking for $100,000, the ERP makes up over $50,000 of it. Okay, the lobbyist review is another 25, and listen, we just renewed the lobbyist contract, so if they were doing, if we had concerns, we'd wanna renew them. So, and then the. You can have your opinion. I was happy to support our lobbyists, because how are they gonna be reviewed, from an audit standpoint? They're gonna look at, they're gonna look at the report that they send us? They're going to look at, they're going to look at the report that they send us?
I think that's a good test.
But I, I'm not, I'm not, I don't want to get into the audit of our lobbyists. What I'm saying is, is that there are some things that are absolute priority, like, are we being double billed? Are we, are we, are we, are our third-party vendors working in our parks? Are they doing such a good job that we don't have to go out for a bond to fix stuff? That's what I'm focused on, okay? When, when my phone blows up every day, where's the building permit, customer service, dot, 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 dot? We've had, we had this conversation back in October during the workshop, colleagues. We had this conversation. So we need to, to focus on the things that our residents are interacting with these services on a daily basis. Front-load that. So if we go back to the, to the list, you'll see a hundred thousand dollars, basically one-third of the way down, and we're, and we're right on budget. So basically lobbyist review, all the way to the bottom. There's a hundred grand right there. Now, to my commission audit team, if I start taking the budget build into the hours, I'm seeing an hourly rate fluctuation, a price per hour, I imagine you probably have senior folks and junior folks and that sort of thing that may make up the difference, but when I see hours, I'm expecting to see, see the same hourly rate across the board. So I'm not questioning the numbers, I just, there's no identification of how that formula works. If you had an asterisk, just saying that you have, you have a scope of services that have weighted differences, then by all means. But I, I think for public transparency, if you're looking at three hundred and fifty-seven thousand divided by thirteen thirty-five, there's an hourly average, but then going through it, you have just all over the place.
And that is, that is correct. We went through each of those contracts, each line item. We built out a detailed budget and staffing with a director leading each of those.
Figured that.
And, and some are more complex than others, and so the directors will have a higher number of hours on some of the projects than others.
And we could provide that information going forward. We just, it's just depending on the level of detail we wanted to present in the presentation, but we have that information ready to go.
All right, so we asked them to do this. They're here because we, we tasked them with each one of these items. They didn't make any of these up. And it's understandable that we asked them, because we have, we have an interest in, in each of these items. What they're saying is, in order to do them all, it's a hundred grand. If we've lost some of our interest in, in pursuing these items, we need a motion to, to remove them, or we could direct them to meet with the city manager, go through some audit review, risk analysis of all of them, and then recommend to us which ones you might want to remove. Auditors have the ability of, of doing risk analysis on, on items and coming back to us and saying, you know, short of a full-blown audit, here's what we think we could do within the bottom line that, that would make sense. That's an approach. Or we can proceed on a motion to allocate the funds, but we need to have a motion.
Mayor, I'll move ERPs, the two ERP lines, NIST, Commission Designated Projects, and Project Management, to be pushed to October one fiscal funding.
All right, is there a second to that?
Can we, I second it, but can we see, or can we do the math as to taking that off, what it leaves us with, if we take off what was said? Please?
It's, it's, it's way short. Because what I, what was originally done, we had a hundred and eight thousand dollars essentially removed, because I'm, I'm calling the commission-designated project as a, as a twenty-five thousand dollar, that needs to be added no matter what, because there is no commission-designated project right now, is there?
That could always be funded through reserves.
Yeah, some other way, when, if we come up with something. So that could be taken off too as well. So that would be eighteen-five, eighteen-five, twenty-five, and then twenty-five. So we're still about nearly thirty, forty thousand dollars short.
With a friendly amendment, the second, we'll take off lobbyist review.
I would prefer to take off the Compass Food Review. I think the lobbyist review, we would get an ROI based on the amount of contracts, or based on the amount of grants, or whatever they've been able to give back to us, and how much we have paid them. And I think having that going into the next session, and with the ongoing changes in administration at the federal level, I think it's crucial to have that be a part of our conversation, at least to whether we sign the contracts with them, at least to help evaluate what they can do better within the contract already.
Mayor, I, I don't have an issue supporting my colleague in swap in Compass for lobbyist review for the October one funding.
Can you restate the motion, please?
Sure, the motion would be to fund in October, I'm sorry, let me, let me strike that. The motion would be to remove Compass Group, both ERPs, NIST, Commission Designated Projects, and Project Management.
What does that total?
And the commission-designated project.
Yes.
Yeah, I said that. I'm sorry.
What does that total?
It's a little over a hundred thousand.
It's over a hundred. It gets, it gets us there.
We're close.
It's about one oh nine.
One oh nine.
It'll be, it...
It'll be pretty close.
Might be a little bit over, and, but again, my goal...
Is there a second to that motion?
Second.
There's a motion being made and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, any from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Appeals of Board of, Board of Adjustment Decisions? None?
None, Mayor.
Okay, announcement of board committee appointments. Commissioner Good.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, yes, I have the, it's my pleasure tonight to appoint Ms. Lisa Stewart to the Diversity and Heritage Advisory Board. Ms. Stewart is originally from Boston, but she is a twenty-eight-year resident of the city of Pembroke Pines. And when, and if you look at her resume, you're going to see that she has significant experience in real estate, you know, serving at both the state and national level in leadership roles. Lisa handles difficult situations with grace and directs her energy in, in highly productive ways, which is evident by her, the fact that she is currently the Broward President of the Women's Council of Realtors, and she serves on the Diversity and Affordable Housing Committee for the Broward Palm Beach St. Lucie Realtors Association. Lisa demonstrates an unstoppable personality, a deep interest in helping people, and specifically helping people in Pembroke Pines. So it was with honor and privilege to appoint Ms. Lisa Stewart to the Diversity and Heritage Advisory Board. I really want to thank you for caring to serve and continuing to serve our great community. Thank you, Lisa.
If you could pull the mic down. Kind of short, right?
No, it's fine.
I do want to say that I am honored to accept this appointment for this committee, the Diversity Heritage Board. Again, like Tom, Commissioner Good said, I do have a lot of experience in adversity. I currently also serve on a diversity committee for the state and the national Board of Realtors, and it's really something in my heart that I want to really bring to Pembroke Pines, and I'm hoping that with this appointment, that I can be, give my Realtor perspective on diversity, because inclusion and equality is very important to me. So I do want to thank the commission, as well as the mayor, for this appointment, and I'll make you proud.
Great choice. Well done. Okay, today's consent agenda consists of items one through nine. What's your pleasure?
Mayor, I'd like to pull item six, seven A one, and seven A two.
Six, Hernandez, seven A.
One and two.
Seven A one.
Oh, all of six?
Yeah, well, all of six, but seven.
Seven, one and two. Okay, anyone else? All right, I'll look for a motion on items one, two, three, four, five, seven, B, C, and D, item eight, and item nine.
I'll move it.
Moved by the vice mayor, is your second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Hearing none, any from the public? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show, show, it passes unanimously. Item six, Commissioner Hernandez.
I wish they had a Cliff Notes version. Okay. Motion to approve the following agreements. A, Assignment Assumption and Consent Agreement for the Management and Maintenance of the Pembroke Lakes Golf Course from Professional Course Management Limited to Professional Course Management VI six, I guess, Inc. B, Assignment Assumption and Consent Agreement for the Management of the Pembroke Lakes Golf Course Pro Shop from Professional Course Management Limited to Professional Course Management VI Inc. Fourth Amendment to the Management and Maintenance of the Pembroke Lakes Golf Course Agreement with Professional Course Management VI Inc. to include increases to the management fee, and other expense increases adjusting the annual contract amount to one point, well, one million, four hundred and thirty-one thousand, seven hundred and seventy-eight dollars and eighty-eight cents, effective April fifteen, twenty twenty-five, and to extend the agreement for a five-year period beginning November fifteen, twenty twenty-six, pursuant to section three, five, one, eight, section C eight of the city's Code of Ordinances. Fourth Agreement to the Pembroke Lakes Golf Course Pro Shop Agreement with Professional Course Management VI Inc. to include increases to the management fee and other expense increases adjusting the annual contract to a hundred and eighty-two thousand, three hundred and forty-seven dollars and eighty-four cents, effective April fifteen, twenty twenty-five, and to extend the agreement for a five-year period beginning November fifteen, twenty twenty-six, pursuant to section thirty-five, eight dot, eighteen, C eight of the city's Code of Ordinances.
I have a second, please.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Good. Vice Mayor, you recognize.
And I do want to thank Ms. Sorenson and her staff. I don't normally pull items, and I have nothing but the utmost respect for Manager Dodge and his staff, and I love Pembroke Lakes Golf Course. A hundred thousand dollar increase, retroactive to yesterday, is not something I can support. The increases that I see here, which I won't go through all of them, they're obviously in the item, B, fifteen thousand to twenty thousand per year, the annual increase is changed to third, fourth, and fifth years for staffing and maintenance, reimbursement cap is raised from thirty to thirty-five, the reimbursement cap for the thirty to thirty-five thousand, excuse me, raise the reimbursement cap for the city required environmental pollution liability insurance from fifteen hundred to twenty-five hundred. It's not that I would oppose any adjustments in business contracts, but this is a one-hundred percent increase, retroactive to yesterday. I, I just don't think that's the way we should be doing business. I also think there's adequate enough time. This does not expire until November fifteen of twenty twenty-six, and I have full confidence in Mr. Dodge and Ms. Sorenson to be able to negotiate a much more reasonable agreement. Those are my thoughts, and I welcome the thoughts of my colleagues. Again, nothing but respect for our staff, but this is not an item that I can support.
Mr. Dodge, could we have Assistant City Manager Sorenson to come, come forward and put this in context?
Christina Sorenson, Assistant City Manager. The, the request for the increase came from Mr. Lepenzina, who's the owner of Professional Course Management, and it was, it was to ask for an increase in his management fee. It's a hundred thousand dollars for the contract, for the management of the golf course, it's fifteen thousand for the management of the pro shop. Mr. Lepenzina has not had an increase in his management fee for the golf course in twenty-eight years, and in the pro shop, I think it's since two thousand and six. Over the last five years, there has been, and this agreement was approved, the current agreement we're in now was approved in twenty twenty-one. Over the last five years, we have seen significant increases in the cost of doing business, and not just buying fertilizer, but the cost of insurance, the cost of retaining a skilled workforce has gone up significantly. Mr. Lepenzina's contract currently only calls for a three percent increase in years three, four, and five, and only, that increase only applies to the cost for the labor. It did not apply to his management fee. The other fees that are in there that were referenced that are increases in the cap have to do with the health insurance. Back in two thousand sixteen, Mr. Lepenzina came to us when the Affordable Care Act was passed. Actually, he came to us six years after it was passed, and said that I am now being required to provide this insurance to my employees. I had, I had it built in for a few of them, but I did not anticipate supplying it to all of them. So six years later, he came and said, I'm just going to ask you if you could help me by covering, reimbursing me for any expense that I have, the employer contribution portion. And so over time, it was twenty-five thousand in twenty sixteen. Last time we renewed this, in twenty twenty-one, we raised it to thirty, and I provided in the Monday memo a chart to show the actual increase in the cost that's gone up significantly in the last four years. It's doubled the employee contribution amount. The other fee is the insurance fee that was, the cap was increased into straight reimbursement. He gives us a bill for it, and we reimburse him for it. Those costs have also gone up. So it's not a fee that is directly to, well, it is the management fee, it's not a fee that goes directly to Mr. Lepenzina. He has come to us and said, I have not raised this fee, I have been dipping into this fee to cover the cost, to maintain this course, because over the last couple of years, I, the money that I have set aside for labor has not been able to cover it, and I'm just asking you to please supplement that by increasing the management fee. And then we were able to relate to that amount by looking at the CPI over the last twenty-eight years, and had we applied that to the management fee from day one, the fee would actually be around two hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
Thank you, Commissioners. For the record, I want to, I, I see that Mr. Lepenzina is here, and also Mr. Allison is here, the, the, the club pro. They're both here? If you, if anyone has any additional questions?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do.
Mr. Good. Commissioner Good.
Thank you. So I too am a big fan of the, of the golf course. I love the fact that we've been able to turn that golf course actually into a, sort of a destination, right, for a lot of folks that I know love going there too. So I, I want to say I do empathize with the vice mayor. I, I'm, I'm, this is coming at me really causing me a lot of conflict. We, we were talking about being in a contract for twenty-nine, nearly thirty years, with the same vendor. Never, I don't know if it's ever been bid out during that thirty years, there's no reference in here about it ever being bidded. And we are asking for, and to be honest with you, I don't know, do we always do this in five-year increments?
Yes.
These have always been five-year increments?
Yes.
So, and this is another five-year, we're agreeing to a five-year agreement with a five-year extension.
It's just for five more years. It's just an extension, putting us through to twenty twenty-six, which is the current agreement we're in now, and then extending it another five years after that. It's just a five-year extension.
All right, so, okay, so we're extending it five years from the date of expiration, which is next year in two thousand and six, right?
November twenty-sixth.
Twenty, twenty-six, okay. So the first thing that comes at me, to be honest, is this five-year term issue, just five-year in, in general. We're seeing it more and more in a lot of our contracts, not just this one here. And so I got kind of focused, not so much on the, on the golf course piece of it, I got focused on a policy, what I believe should be a policy. I think, I think it would be helpful that we sort of give some direction to city staff in terms of setting up terms to contracts. This is a five-year contract where... This is a five-year contract where, you know, we're agreeing to a, a, a cost, and then we're agreeing to a guaranteed escalator. Even if there's no increase in the CPI or other costs associated with that, but we're guaranteeing it. For me, one of the things why, you know, if you have lesser terms, like you could have a five-year term, but it could be like a three-year with two one-year renewals, or a two-year with three one-year renewals, or things like that. One of the most important things when you have that opportunity at time of renewal is to negotiate circumstances that may exist. So maybe something did happen to the, you know, to the detriment of, of the vendor, and the vendor really does need to have a recovery of cost. But two, we should have the ability to negotiate detriments to us, and say, listen, we've had some changes in our, in our way we're doing business, and so we should be able to negotiate a better price, and listen, if you don't like it, fine, we'll just go back out to bid, or, or something else. And that's something else that's important too, that when you go out to bid, and when you have shorter terms with renewals. You introduce the essence of competition. And that's what this is all about, is competitive bidding, when you read our procurement, it's all about competitive bidding. And the intent is to keep the competition alive even during the activation of a contract, because when you give somebody a five-year contract. It's, it's sort of like a, a little bit of a monopoly, and then we wind up seeing regular these amendments that ask for more. And sometimes justification is very clear, and sometimes justification is a little bit harder, because maybe we're not in that profession, we're not seeing those things. So, that, I think, the issue about establishing a policy for term in agreement, I think we need to take that up as a board, period. Just, and, and Mr. Mayor, I leave that to you to somehow allow, make that in terms of a.
I'll have that conversation with the manager, and we'll come back with, with some kind of an item where we can get into that.
Where we can talk about policy as, as a commission, we talked about terms to agreement. The next thing on this here is I, I really have a hard time whenever I have to make a decision based on best interest of the city. Best interest of the city means you are going to exempt the procurement from the procurement code, because we think it's in the best interest of the city. And we can do that, providing that we have appropriate information, justification for why to do that. The justification here for me doesn't rise to that level for me to assume the responsibility of staff to award a contract that may not have been competitively bid. It doesn't reach that level for me, and I'm sorry for that.
Well, it was competitively bid.
Twenty-nine years ago.
Well, I'm about to get to that, go ahead.
All right, but my position is that the justification that's provided, I'm not doubting that there's an issue, and I don't have issues about maybe giving buddy, somebody, something more. But to give, by, give a company something more based on the justification that's provided for the next five years beyond another in two thousand and six, that's deep for me, and I can't go there.
And retroactive to yesterday.
And retroactive to yesterday, okay. And the, and the last thing that, that I, I didn't quite understand, and maybe, maybe Mr. Attorney can help me out. But the company is registered with, with the address to a city facility. So how is it that a company can have a city facility as their registered place of business address? When they do their filing for their business, every company has a place where they do their business. Are we renting space out that they have a lease with us?
Yes.
They, they're leasing this, and are they allowed to use our space as, as a registered for business, Mr. Attorney?
May I respond, Mayor, this is a bit of a unique situation, the, the vendor, who is both the manager of the pro shop as well as the facility. They, they may have designated the Pembroke Pines address as their principal place of business. Do they have a separate place of business besides, I don't know the answer, I know that under the Sun Biz check, which I know staff performed, they're using, I suspect, based on what you just described, the local address, which is the city's address. If there's objection to that, obviously, they'd have to change it, but there's nothing illegal about it, in so long as the entity, which is the city Pembroke Pines, doesn't raise an objection to using that particular address. So for example, if they're sued for some particular reason, they'd have to serve, serve as a process at the location where they do their business. Assuming that Mr. Lepenzina is the registered agent, or perhaps someone of his company business would be. But in this situation, it was, it was, it's wise to expose the issue to make sure that the city has no objection to his continuous use of the city's address for that purpose. We've, we've had other circumstances over the years where the, the, the owner of the property was unaware that they were using that particular address as the principal place of business. That, that, that may be fashionably different, but also in this situation, the city controls the answer, if the city objects, they'd have to make a change.
So, again, I guess, Mr. Manager, one of the things that I, I, I don't know that I said well, I've already had an issue relevant to this some time ago regarding an LLC. Using our city facility as a, as their place of business. Are there other companies that we lease our facilities to that are using our facility as their place of business on their registration for their company? And I don't mean to put that on you now, I, I guess that's a question that I'm going to have for you. So are there any other companies that lease our facilities that use our facility address as their place of business in their registration? Well, let, let, I, I'm asking the city manager, so that's, that's my question. Just, is there any other company that we lease our facilities to that use our facility as, our facility's address as their place of business in their registration for their company?
Mayor, I, I can't answer that, I do know we do lease space to others, whether on Sun Biz they use that address or not, I'd have to research it.
Okay.
Okay, he'll research it.
That's fine.
Anything else?
No, sir, I'm good.
Anybody else want to speak on this?
I'll, I'll weigh in quickly, Ms. Sorenson, I want to thank you for the, for the detail that you provided all of us, and. This Monday memo is available online, so you can see the same information that we have. But what you left out is that if CPI was calculated. PCM would actually be owed two hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars instead of the two hundred thousand that they're asking for. So, there is, I, I am thankful for. The amount of care, concern, professionalism that PCM has done for the city Pembroke Pines. When you look at, there are ver, there are very few vendors that we can point to, there could be engineers. We have, we have vendors, if they weren't in the city Pembroke Pines, we wouldn't be the city that we are. I've never found. I found it bizarre that the increase hasn't been asked for much sooner than now, to be quite honest with you. That's how much sacrifice has been going on, to keep the lights on during COVID, to step in when our restaurant was bleeding out faster than a tourniquet can, can stop the bleeding. If we look at the total sum of all parts here, Mr. Lepenzina has given more to the city than we've given Mr. Lepenzina. So, I, I have, I have absolutely no issue supporting this item tonight. The issues that Commissioner Good brings up with respect to number of years of contract and that sort of thing, we can get to that. I welcome that. But this isn't, this isn't the item to, to lead with. I want to thank, I want to thank PCM, their staff, their countless, countless means of just trying to say, how can we help? How can we make Pembroke Pines better? You know, this golf course is in, is in District Two, and it, it is, it is the gem of the district, and I am, I am grateful for the way it's maintained. And we're certainly going to stop them golf balls at some point, going places that they shouldn't go, but we are, we are. PCM management, this is, this is not a, I'm not giving a commercial for that, okay, but they run the best golf courses in South Florida. So there are competitors that come down from Canada and other places that, you know, do things on the, on, on the cheap. And it shows in the quality of play, the number of rounds, the, the Google reviews. I wish our baseball diamonds looked as good as our putting greens, that's how good they are. So with that, Mayor, I'm not going to belabor the point, I'm, I'm going to support the, I want to support this item tonight, and we'll get to the other, the other stuff, hopefully sooner rather than later.
Commissioner Rodriguez, did you have anything?
Yeah, I think I'm, I'm in agreeance with the increase that they're asking for, I just don't want to make it a habit that an increase like this, of this quantity comes in the middle of a contract or towards the end of a contract. I know that, that might be how it's, it's done in this particular moment, because they're bleeding out of, of, of that fee, and that totally makes sense, but I don't necessarily want to get into the habit, and in this moment, it seems to me as justifiable, however, in other circumstances, I don't want any other vendor to think that because we let this piece go through, that that is something that we are eligible to be doing in the future, or at least personally would not be supporting in the future. I understand the circumstances, I've been able, obviously, to go to the golf course to see how well-maintained it is, I don't know much about golf, but it looks very nice, and it is something that I know a lot of people think about when they think of Pembroke Pines. I am very much in agreeance with Commissioner Good on the length, on the question of the length of the contract. Can we find a middle ground of extending this and considering a larger conversation regarding contracts? But I also agree that I don't know if this is the particular contract to play that off of. But I do, I think we need to find a, a bit of a middle ground for that, and then the other part that I had on this is, they do help us bring in a, a profit, at least for the last couple of years, been able to do that.
Yes.
And the golf course is a park, I know we were talking about budget a little bit earlier, my thought in this, and maybe it can be another kind of conversation, but if those profits can be put in a particular line item for us to not just consider them as a profit for our general budget, but for them to be allocated to improvements of our other parks. It's in such a way of, one of our, supporting the rest of our parks, which are technically a subsidy to the city, considering we're not making money off of, you know, our, our other parks in the city, nor would we want to. This one happens to make money because we're providing very specific service, but I think that's something for us to, to think about, and, and to consider maybe a little bit of where we draw the line, how much to extend this. But to make the point that this isn't something that I'm personally willing to do for, for other contracts moving forward.
Okay, anything else? Yes. No, go ahead.
So, so if, if I can get my understanding here, so we're, we're saying there's a retroactive request for the cost increase, is that what we're, is that what it is?
The reason for April fifteenth is the way we pay Mr. Lepenzina is on the first and the fifteenth of the month, so I knew the commission meeting was today, I put it back to the fifteenth just because of how we pay him every month, it's just one day.
But, but the ask is to increase to a hundred, a two hundred, whatever, increase by a hundred thousand dollars?
Right, but the effect for this year would only be from, for this fiscal year would only be from April fifteenth until.
Sure, but that's the ask right now, right, one of the asks is to have an increase to the fee structure, to the structure, to the cost.
Yes, sir.
Whatever that may be, the five, fifteen to twenty, the hundred to two hundred.
Right.
Okay, and then the second piece is the extension for five years.
Correct.
Okay, so, I just, I cannot go on a best interest, a five-year contract, we're already in a contract year. If there's an ask for the increase, I can, I can accept that based on staff recommendations, verifying that you all looked at all the relevant information.
Yep.
All the details, that it's reproducible if requested, why you made that decision. I can make that decision tonight to give that, that increase, but I, I cannot give the five-year renewal, and Mr. Mayor, I'd like to maybe make a, amend a motion, or maybe even a replacement motion, just to, to authorize them their increase that they're asking for. But, but not to go with the five-year renewal and actually maybe go out and do a bid, because you say twelve months, and we have more than twelve months at this point to do a bid, just to see, you know, if they're competitive, and if they've been doing a great job, they already got a very good end, right? So they understand the job, and that's fine, and then I won't be stressed with having to make a decision for a competitive bid process.
So, so you're making a friendly amendment to, is it your motion, or is it Vice Mayor's?
You, you made the motion.
So, so it's your motion, so, so do you accept the amendment?
To be clear, you're saying, accept the terms within this contract, right now, what is proposed, a hundred thousand dollar increase, Christina.
Your, your, your mo, your mo, who made the motion to?
I read it.
Okay, you read it, who made the motion to, all right, so it's your motion, so you want to amend your motion to say what?
So, what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that amend the motion to accept the, the increase in the terms, but not to give the extension for five years, and that it goes out for a bid.
I, I will second it, and I know you want to speak briefly, again, this is not personal against anybody in particular, I love the golf course, they do a wonderful job, I think we're opening a Pandora's Box for other vendors to be able to come right before the end, everyone has struggled. Businesses have struggled, whether it's COVID, whether it's inflation, and we are saying to almost every other vendor with a city, come on down right before, a year, a year and a half before my contract expires, and let me double it. I, I don't think that's good business practice, as much as I appreciate the work that, that has been done at the Pembroke Lakes Golf Course. We just chopped off a hundred thousand, hundred nine thousand dollars off a commission auditor, but we're willing to give a hundred thousand possibly overnight to our vendor. I think we're making a mistake if we do it, but I am seconding your motion if it means we're going to not extend five years and not go to November of twenty thirty-one. Is that, did I get it right?
Absolutely.
Then I'm seconding the motion.
Okay, anything else?
Mayor, for the record, that's an alternate motion or a substitute motion for the main motion, or the amendment to the motion.
Okay, so, so, so the, the motion that's been made is different than the one that's printed?
Correct.
So the one that we're voting on is to deny the, the request and, and deny the five-year extension?
Mayor.
Is everyone clear?
Nope, that's not, that's not what I was saying.
That's not what you're saying?
No, I'm saying that we would, we would accept the, the additional term, which is the increase, but we would not.
I'm, I'm confused now.
I think he said that, I think that's what the mayor said.
So, I, I, my understanding of the motion was to reject the request for the additional funds, and also to. All right, somebody's got to clarify the motion, because I'm not following.
Okay, so right now, the, the way that this item reads is that there's a request to increase the fee.
Mm-hmm.
And then to extend the agreement beyond twenty twenty-six for five years.
Right.
And I'm, I'm agreeing to the first part, saying, I agree to the increase in the fee for the current contract year, or for the current contract that they're in. But not to extend beyond 2026 and to go out to bid by that time.
And is that what you seconded?
I seconded because...
So, so, so you're okay with the increase?
I'm, A, B, C, D, and E, which is what Christina just spoke on, Ms. Sorenson, excuse me, sorry, first names. She just spoke on, I would accept all of the increases proposed here, but to Commissioner Good's point, they sunset, we have to go to, go through a bid process in November of 2026, as opposed to what it says here, which is November 15, 2031. In essence, we're giving them at this point a seven-year extension, or a six-year extension is what, I think Commissioner Good, I don't want to put words in your mouth, but I believe that's part of the concern with his motion. So they would get the money they're requesting for the next year and change. Then you go to bid.
Okay. I, does everybody understand the motion?
Yeah.
Mr. Lepinzina, you wanted to speak?
Mayor, while he's coming down, Mr. Dodge, City Attorney, Ms. Sorenson, there's a cancellation for a convenience clause built into this thing. Can you, can you please advise the commission of how many days notice before you speak, Mr. Lepinzina?
Sorry, the question?
Before you speak, there's a cancellation for a convenience clause.
Correct.
Okay. Mr. Lepinzina, how many days do we have to give you?
How many days do we have?
How many days or months do we have to give you to cancel a contract?
I think it's 30 days.
30 days notice. Now, my question, my question to my colleagues to consider, if we have the power of canceling something in 30 days, and we, we just, we have capital improvements, it's in the mon, it's in the memo, I'm not making this up, there, there are things in, in the upcoming budget that we cannot do without their expertise. Now, certainly, for those who, who may or may not golf, I can tell you, there's only two vendors in South Florida. PCM Management and Canada. That's what we have. We go out to bid, you're going, the, the, I'll raise this, the last time we had a discussion about going out to bid over a five-year deal, and Mayor, please rein me in if I'm, if I'm off base on this, was, was a waste contract. And if we went out, things were going to get a whole lot more expensive, instead of negotiating with the vendor that we currently have.
We went out to bid for that, by the way.
We did, and guess what? The rates went up.
That's right.
We went out to bid, and I don't feel bad about it.
Okay, but the rates went up.
For the record, Mr. Mayor, you terminated the process legally, on the record.
We have, we have, we have a substitute amendment in front of us.
So, so for the record, before Mr. Lepinzina even speaks, I hear my colleagues loud and clear, this is not the contract to do that on. There, there are, there are much bigger, bigger, much bigger contracts that we currently have with the city that, within the last year, we just extended, not five years, but 10. 10. 10.
All right. Mr. Lepinzina, you recognize?
If I can. First, let me recognize Mr. Dodge. I came here in 1973, I was the director of golf, and for 45 of the last 50, 52 years, I've either owned Pembroke Lakes or operated. It's been a privilege to work for you. And Mr. Goran, I think one or two years later, you got affiliated with this city. It's been a privilege to, to have you as our attorney and, and represent our contracts. I want to be, thank you all for your comments. I want to be totally frank. You have the friends and family rate for me. I have 19 golf courses that I operate, and I don't have a fee less than 350,000 at any of them. This is a friends and family rate that I've given because of my association and ownership of this property and my allegiance to the city and to the political people that we've been involved with. Let me give a little background, how I got here. I owned the course, I sold it to you, $6 million. We were cash flowing 600,000 a year. Five years later, the then Vice Mayor Ben Fierndino called me and said, we're losing 450 to 500,000 a year. Can you come back? I said, I've got all kinds of properties I'm managing, you know, what's the terms? He said, well, I need you to accept the terms that we had. The vendors walked out, we have nobody to operate the course. So I never negotiated the deal. I would have never negotiated a deal if there was no escalation clause. I've been here for 28 years. Do you have, do you have an employee that's been here for 28 years, never got a raise? Do you have an employee or a vendor? That you've been here for 28 years, never got a raise? If you do, he's out of business, and the employee's long gone. I didn't ask the city for 28 years for an increase because I want to live by my contract, and I don't want to come back. When that term ended, four or five years later, the city came back to me and said, can you renew? I said, well, I can renew a negotiation. Well, if you renew the current terms, it'll walk right through, we'll accept it. I said, okay, we'll renew. Over the last five or six years, we've been eaten up by inflation, the cost of employees, the cost of insurance, the cost of supplies. It has eaten us up alive, and we have had no increases to offset that. I've been out of pocket on this course for the last three years. And my other golf courses, we have escalation clauses, I have no golf cost less than a 350,000 dollar fee, and I have incentives at every course I have. I represent numerous municipalities, City of Miami Beach, City of Miami, Village of Miami Shores, Dade County, there's all escalation clauses. But I was asked to inherit this, so I never negotiated, but I am negotiating it now. My proposal is firm, there's no room for negotiation. I respect whatever vote you have. I would just remind you of this. The continuity of this agreement is critical to success of the course, the relationship we have with the corporate groups, the charitable groups, the members, the, the tournaments that, that we generate, we generate. I brought the premier card here, I, I operate, own, operate the premier card. It generates 500,000 a year to the city. I brought it here, and it's one of the things that got to help us get out of the hole. I have a database that I've collected over 30, 35 years, of 35,000 golfers in Dayton, Nebraska. I market them regularly. It's my database, but I use it for the benefit of my courses and the benefit of Pembroke Lakes. You don't have that? You don't have my database? Get somebody else? You don't have the premier card? You're lucky your place has revenue. I'll take my, I, I have other opportu, I've turned down Grand Palm six times because I don't think it would be fair at Pembroke Lakes to have a competing property that close. So I've turned it down. It's available to me, I can go to tomorrow. What I'm asking for is more than fair, is more than reasonable, and I will take the personal blame that I didn't come here sooner, but it was my reluctance to come back to the city in the middle of a contract and change the terms. But it got to the point two years ago where I told Ms. Sorenson, I could no longer continue, I could no longer continue subsidizing the property because of the increased costs, my labor costs. You have the details in front of you. They're up 40, 50, 60 percent. I can't hire people for $8 an hour anymore. That's what I hired when I got here. That's what I inherited. It became impossible. And I said to Ms. Sorenson, I can't continue. I'm not going to continue to subsidize. And like I said, this is a family and friends rate. If I rebid this property, my fees are going to 350, and my increase will be 5 percent a year, and that'll hopefully keep up with inflation. I don't, I, I don't know what inflation is going to be. I didn't know what it was 20 years ago or 10 years ago, but I can tell you what it went to, 9 and 1/2 percent. And I can say the city felt that crush, crunch, we felt it, I had no way to offset it. I had no way to pay my people a fair price and keep them. Some may ask, do you think I'm worth that? Let me make a couple of statements to you. You've been on a commission for how many years? Five, 10, I don't know how many you've been there. You can go back 10 years, you can go back 20 years, you can go back 30 years. You can ask Mr. Dodge, you can ask Ms. Sorenson, you can ask the City Attorney. Has anyone complained about the service we provide? We play 50,000 rounds a year, 50,000 people never complained. Over five years, that's 250,000 people have never complained. Over 10 years, that's 500,000 people. You never got to complain on the quality of the service, you never got to complain on the quality of the golf course, and you never got to complain of the pricing, which is our responsibility. You don't know what the next guy's going to price you at. He may want to make a, a lot more money. And I say this in all humility and humbleness, my proposal is firm. I would appreciate a yes or no vote. If it's no, we'll move on. If it's yes, we'll continue to do the job we have. And I will also tell you, I've interfered before many municipalities, many of them failing. You take away the continuity that we provide, the relationships with the members, the relationship with the charities, the relationships with the corporate groups, the relationship with the public, you take that away, you will destroy your business. It will be eaten up and destroyed. We're, we voted the best management company in the state of Florida. Our 19 courses, I have testaments from every one of them on the job we've done, and the same as Mrs., Ms. Sorenson has given you. In, in final comments, I want to say that we feel like we had a tremendous success at Pembroke Lakes. Profitable, condition-wise, service-wise, we're proud of our record. And I want to let this commission know that our success could not have been achieved without Christine Sorenson's team and effort. She is smart, she is capable, she is thorough, she is, without a doubt, the best manager we've ever answered to in 45 years. And I want to thank her for her support and tell you that whatever credit we take for this success, I share with her and her team. Whatever your vote is, I'll accept with, with appreciation, and I've had a great 45 years.
Thank you, Mr. Lepinzina. Thank you very much.
Okay.
Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much.
Okay. So what we have before us now is a substitute amendment. The original amendment that, the original motion is still on the table, we have a substitute amendment. Anything else? Any, anyone from the public? Mayor, Clerk, will you call the roll, please?
On the amendment, Mr. Mayor.
On the amendment.
Correct. Thank you, sir.
Yes?
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz? Mayor Castillo?
Hold on a second, if, if I could. So I just want to make sure that, that we understand. The amendment is to pay him the money but cancel the, the five years.
Five-year extension.
I just wanted to make sure.
Five-year extension. Can I, sorry, I didn't, I thought the...
You might not, I, I thought you might not have caught it. So I, you know, I just want to, I just want to make sure. So it's to approve the, let me finish. It's to approve the money but to deny the five-year amendment.
The extension there.
And so, and so that's the substitute amendment. The motion that Commissioner, that Vice Mayor read into the record is the whole package that staff is recommending. So I just...
So then I'll revise, I think I would prefer personally to say yes to the increase, not necessarily cancel, but evaluate or take that up at the next commission meeting with the information that was given to us by the owner. I think...
So what, what would you?
Am I able to, to amend it just for it to be?
No, you, you can't amend, we're in the middle of a vote, so...
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
The Commissioner could withdraw her, her vote and re-vote, but she has to do it...
She can, she can withdraw her vote and re-vote.
Yes, yes. If, if there's a misunderstanding or clarity in the motion.
Okay, so I'll take back my vote.
And your vote?
No.
No. Okay. Continue the roll call, please.
Mayor was completed, but I'll start.
No.
No.
Commissioner Schwartz is next.
No, I wasn't, I'm sorry. The clerk called me, I was, I was, no.
You're next.
Next, yes.
Okay. Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
And Mayor Castillo?
No. So we're back now to the original motion as, as it was read in, which is staff's recommendation. There has been a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Yes, Commissioner Rodriguez?
Can we bifurcate it and have the contract be part of a further discussion down the line?
You, we, you, a, a separate item can be brought up to discuss any contract later on. Any Commissioner can bring up a, an item to discuss a contract at any time, but the motion before us now is A, B, C, and D as it's written in the, in the agenda.
Are you saying that you would like to, you, you're saying to provide the, the increase and then come back later for the extension?
Yeah.
Okay.
But by later, point of clarification, what's later?
I can put it down for next week, but I think we need to digest the, the commentary meant there, said just now, including the fact that if gone out to bid, he is willing to have it at 350 with a 5% increase.
Mr. Lepinzina, would you be willing to accept that?
On the... Need him on the record, Mr. Mayor.
You, you need to come down.
Thank you, Mayor. No.
You need to come down.
Yeah, I don't like the pressure of this.
You need to put the button.
Hello?
You're on, you're on.
So I've had the, first of all, I started these conversations with Ms. Sorenson six or several months ago, and we have negotiated, and this is where I'm at. This is my final offer. If you don't accept it, I understand, we, we will resign. We will not continue on this basis. You have a 30-day cancellation clause, I don't know what anyone's concerned about. And time you want, you can cancel without cause. If we're not doing our job, you cancel us.
I have to tell, I...
I have, I have eaten this for 28 years. We're not eating it anymore.
No, I, I...
Okay? So I'm, I'm asking for a vote. Whatever your decision is, is, it's okay. We will resign, and you can put it out to bid. We'll make a decision that time if we want to bid, but if we do, I will tell you it'll be substantially higher.
I understand.
And I would, I would call for a vote.
Okay.
Okay?
All right.
What was your offer, though, by the way? So I'm missing it.
My offer?
Yeah, what is your final offer that you're saying, please?
You have it in front of you.
Which is what?
My, my fees are going from 100,000 to 200,000. My fees are going from 100,000 to 200,000.
Okay, we agree to that.
My, my increase in, in labor allowance is going to 3% annually.
We agree to that.
And we're going to start this agreement now, and in a year and a half, when the original agreement is over, it'll be extended for five more years. It's a six-and-a-half-year extension, which I believe is in your best interest, for the continuity of the business, and to keep the business in place, and to keep my employees in place. I mean, there's a lot of factors here to consider. I think it's fair, like I said, is there any employee in the city that went 28 years without a raise? Is there any vendor that went 28 years without a, at least I'm business? I did.
And, and everything you said, I'm, I'm not disagree with anything.
Okay.
But I want you to understand something else, too. There are laws that govern how I sit on this dais, and I am asking staff to provide the proper procurement vehicle that allows me to feel comfortable to make a decision the way that you want to go. You can't provide that to me.
Wait, Commissioner, this item would not be in front of us. Mr. City Attorney, is, is there any legal problem with the item in front of us?
Short answer is no, Mr. Mayor and Commissioner.
So that is not, you've heard that from the...
May I, may I say one other thing?
From the attorney. That is not a concern.
I, I've represented the Village of Miami Shores for 35 years, under five-year increments. They've never put it out to bid, never. I've represented the City of Miami Beach for 24 years. They haven't put it out to bid because the results are phenomenal, just like they are here. So you have a right to cancel me?
I'm doing a great job.
I don't, I don't, I have, I have no objection to that.
Folks, we have a very long agenda.
But if, if you want to cancel my agreement, I think you can do better. I would welcome that.
Hold on, okay, all right, all right, all right. I have to stop it, I have to stop it.
I want to make one thing clear, though.
We have a very long agenda.
Sir, no one here is talking about canceling an agenda.
Go ahead.
No one here's, I haven't heard one of my colleagues talking about canceling a contract.
Okay.
So let's not, let's not go there. What I am saying, and I think Vice Mayor, Commissioner Good has said, is, we got this last week, and you're asking for a one-hundred percent increase, and my concern is, no matter how good of a job you've done, we have other vendors in this city. And what's to stop these other vendors to come now and tell us, we want a hundred percent increase?
That's, that's a decision you have to make.
I understand.
I don't have a gun, I'm not here to force anybody. I haven't had an increase for twenty-eight years.
I just want you to understand, it's not...
And it's absolutely outrageous that I'm still here at this price.
Okay, I understand that. I just did not want you putting words in anybody's mouth that anyone's looking to cancel a contract.
Okay.
That was never discussed.
All right, thank you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
I'm going to weigh, I'm going to weigh in on this, okay? I believe it is in the best interest of the City of Pembroke Pines to keep this vendor in place. I think that the request that's being made, given the history of this vendor in our city, is more than reasonable, and I hope that they can continue to stay with us, because it is good for Pembroke Pines, it is good for Pembroke Lakes Golf Course, they do an outstanding job, and frankly, it's a steal, what we're getting them for. They run Miami Beach, they run Normandy Shores, they run the best public golf courses in South Florida, and we get them for a song. And frankly, I, I just think that, I just think I'm going to vote yes for the A, B, C, and D. So, is that the motion?
I read the motion.
Yeah, so the motion's been made, and it's been seconded. The clerk will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
No.
Commissioner Good?
No.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes. And by our vote, the, the item is passed. Thank you very much. Item seven, Commissioner Hernandez, this is A, M, and A1 and A2.
A1 and A2.
Yes, sir. Go right ahead.
Hold on. Motion to approve the department recommendations for the following items listed on the contracts' database report. A1, a Superior Towing, a towing company towing services renewal. A2, Westway Towing Inc., towing services renewal.
Is there a second? Second. Seconded by Commissioner Good. Commissioner Hernandez, you're recognized.
I was, I've tried to gather as much information on this as I could from administration. I honestly want to hear from the Commissioners Schwartz, Good, and you, Mayor, as to how the, since I obviously was not here, how it came to be that we had two vendors providing the service.
Okay, so, so let me, let me give you, let me give you, and, and I want to thank you for, I'll start off the discussion. Let me give you a once upon a time with this towing business. So the, so the real, the real wonder is why cities are involved in this at all, because we don't set the rate. The set, the rate is set by the county, okay? But we have to go through all of this. And basically, what they do is they pick up accidents on the road for the police department. They really work with the police department, the police department, the fire department, they need to clear the road, and they call them. As I understand it, there have been different ways to do this in the past, but as I understand it, you're one week on and one week off, is that still the way it sort of works? So one week it's, it's them, and the other week it's them, and they go back and forth. Not so long ago, there was a company called A and B. A and B did business here for, how long, chief? Twenty, twenty-five years? Something like that? Their renewal came up, and this commission decided to play politics.
Well, you need a previous.
Correct. And in fact, the guy from A and B was told, eh, you know, you should be careful what campaign contributions you make. That's on video. I'm not making this up.
Mayor, Mayor, A and B, A and B was not asked, A and B said that he provided campaign donations. That came from the vendor, that did not come from the dais.
You need to go watch the video.
No, I, I have, I have a very strong memory of that night.
Okay, but, I'm not so sure how strong it is on this, because I remember it real clear. So, so, so go back, go back and look at the video.
I remember you supported the vendor. You, you, you wanted to extend, you wanted to extend their contract.
Excuse me, you're interrupting me.
Well, I just want to...
I endorse the vendor because the police chief said he wanted him again. This commission then invented stuff like, oh, but they don't have this kind of equipment, and they don't have that kind. This is, this contract has been a political toy in Pembroke Pines for quite some time, okay? Now we have two new companies. Forget about the past, let's, let's bury it, like, like the old turd it is. Bury it, okay? Now you've got two great companies who are here. That's today. And they're now in a struggle, because they, they're competitors, okay? And one of them came forward and said, you know what, I want to sweeten the deal, but I want to sweeten the deal if, if it's a, of an exclusive. And then word got, I don't know how, word got to the other guy that, and then the other guy said, well, I'll sweeten the deal, too. And now we've got this bad feeling about what's going on. And here's, and here's the bottom line. We can either vote to, we can either vote to allow both of them to stay, or we can put it back out to RFP, or I don't know what. But that's where we're at right now. I'll tell you who wins, that guy over there, the police chief, because he's now stuck under a terrible situation. Every time there's a major crime with a vehicle, he has to hold it as evidence. When I was at BSO, evidence was one of my units. We had a, we had a, a room like six times the size of this, withholding vehicles for like the last twenty, twenty-five years. We had Deputy Beehand's car in there, God rest his soul, with dirt on it this thick from when he was murdered, because you have to hold it for evidence. And I remember talking to Mike Satz about this, and I remember, hey, Mike, what gives? Why do we have to hold this? Well, state attorney. And he said, well, they could always file an appeal. And if they file an appeal, and you don't have the evidence, you lose the case. They get a get-out-of-jail card for free. He said, but do you know what the cost of holding this evidence is? He says, that's a cost of, of living in a free society. That was the answer. But we don't, we live in a free society, but the duty to us is not free. We have to pay for this storage, okay? We have to pay for this storage. So, the deal in front of us is, we have a contract. Mr. Cerulo, can you come forward?
Good evening, Mike Cerulo, City Attorney's Office.
Okay, so as I understand it, as I understand it, the offer in front of us is a renewal at the county's rate with free storage, from both of them. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So, are, we can take the renewal, or we can say no to the renewal and go back out to bid. Could be that the, the RFP asks for free storage. I don't know. But that's, that's what's in front of us now. Now, both companies, I respect the hell out of both of them. Forget about the past, forget about that A and B ended up going out of business because they lost Pembroke Pines, forget about all that stuff. The companies that we have now, they're terrific companies, and they do a hell of a job. Police Chief Vargas, could you come forward, please?
Good evening, Police Chief Jose Vargas.
How happy are you with Superior?
They meet standards, we're happy with them.
How happy are you with Westway?
They meet standards, we're happy with them.
You want to keep them both?
Doesn't matter. It's, at the end of the day...
Would you keep them both? Happily?
Would we keep them both? We're able to keep both, yes.
Yes.
We're, we're able to keep both, or we can work with one. Either way.
Either way, doesn't matter to you.
Yep, doesn't matter.
Okay, thanks. So, that's the story. That's what's before you now. We can continue to do business with both of them, or we can, or, or we can go back out to RFP, or you can give one of them an exclusive over the other, although, can, can you say which one is better than the other?
I cannot tell you that.
Well, see, he, he loves them both. So, that's the situation that we have. So your options are, you pick one over the other, or you, you bring them both on, or you say no to both of them and go back onto the street. Those are your options. I hope I made, I hope I made that clear.
And I'd like to hear from Commissioner Good and Commissioner Schwartz, you both were here, and just wanted to know your thoughts, given that this is the first time I'm ever voting on a towing contract.
Should we make it hard for them? So, yes, Vice Mayor, this was very contentious at the time. There was a lot of energy surrounding, you know, qualifications and intentions and et cetera, et cetera. But the point is that focus where I was at at the time was, I asked for a pool of services. It didn't have to be just two, it could have been eight, it didn't matter to me. The reason for that at the time was certainly to support or to facilitate the services that are needing to be accomplished by the police or anybody else, because sometimes, you know, all the units could be out. It's like, you ever call up a tow company, AAA or something like that? You know, you can get out there right away, or it may take them several hours because they're busy. So the intention was to ensure that, that there was a convenience to, to any of the city's departments that would have a need for that service. And so that's why we went out and did a, a pool of services selection, so, and it turned out to be two companies that you have here today.
Commissioner Schwartz?
There wasn't anything political about it.
I didn't suggest that.
What, what, no, what we had was a committee, selection committee, and every single one of them I, I have the utmost respect for. But their entire employment career was only with that one vendor, A and B. They never worked with anybody else.
Like golf?
They never worked with anybody else. So the issues that we were, that, I can only speak about my district, okay? Which happens to be University Drive. Which happens to be, you know, just a few car accidents a day.
A few?
Just a few. With glass and just car parts all over, all over the place, okay? And the level of service, the residents weren't having it.
Back then?
No, it was only three years ago. So, we, as a commission, looked at a few things. One, the type of equipment that was available for major incidents, like big vehicles rolling over and that sort of thing. And the current vendor didn't have those assets. The current vendor at the time did not have the storage capacity. The current vendor did not have, logistically, the ability to respond.
That's incorrect. I have, I have, I have to correct you.
Let me finish my sentence, sir.
No, no. I have to, I have to interrupt you.
Please do.
That's, that's, that's why, that's why I'm mayor. I have to interrupt you when you say something that isn't correct.
And, and...
A and B had agreements with other towing companies to bring in what equipment they lacked, and it got there right away, and it, and it got taken care of. They did not own the, that, the other equipment, but they had access logistically to it. So I have to correct your mistake.
So, go right ahead. So, to complete my sentence, logistically, it's time, because when Pines and University is blocked, and they need a wrecker that they can only get it in Pompano, that's logistics. They did not own that equipment. They didn't have the ability to get it because the other vendors...
Excuse me, excuse me, that is also incorrect.
The company finished up. There's no need to talk about that past company at this point.
Okay, all right, but that is also incorrect.
Our current vendors, our current vendors are South of 595. And that's where the equipment is. So the selection committee went through a process, and to Commissioner Good's point, wanted a pool. So, we have two vendors. Now, if you look at the ranking of the two vendors, they're both at a hundred percent. If, if, I, 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 I believe that if you asked some members of the selection committee, who've now had three years of seeing something else, they would see that there was improvement. I can tell you this. Commissioner Good can, can agree or disagree. We don't have the issues at Pines and University anymore. We have the accidents, but we don't have car parts and glass and, and long delays. We don't have that anymore. And that's a credit to both vendors, because they, they're on a rotation basis, right? Now, we let them work out what that rotation was. Now, where I'm disappointed is the item is in front of us in April, when the law changed last year. And this conversation should have immediately happened, because that was a change in contractual terms.
You mean the storage?
The storage part.
Storage, I'm just clarifying.
We, as a commission, should have been weighing in months ago, not in the last few minutes. And so, it got to this point because there's a renewal coming up, but there was a change that, when, three years ago, this law wasn't even contemplated. So, when, when the bid, like, the rules changed. And so, my, my, I had this discussion, the state attorney's office, they get a budget from the county. Now, we're all, it's all the same tax dollars, right? If we're paying county taxes, all the same tax dollars. But when they say, hold the evidence, Pembroke Pines is paying for that. However, if you asked both vendors before the change, they stored cars. It was just, it was just an industry assumption. There's some, some things that aren't, don't have to be in writing, they just did it, right? So, I went so far as asking, how many cars do we currently have? So, on the initial purge, we were somewhere between fifty and sixty when the law changed. Now we're down, as of, as of today, right now, we have ten. Ten cars.
What, you mean between both?
Total, for the whole city.
No, no, between both vendors.
No, 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 total for the city, we have ten. I don't know who has who.
Right.
But there's ten of them, okay? So, if you, if you look at what other cities are paying, because other cities are paying, it's somewhere between ten to thirty-dollar range, depending on that negotiation. So if we just go right in the middle, okay? And we say twenty bucks a day for thirty days, that's six hundred dollars a car, that's seven thousand dollars a year. Ten cars, seventy thousand. I think it's really bad business, really bad business, for, to ask a vendor to store something that they could get, be paid for, and it's horrendous that the state attorney's office is asking the Pembroke Pines taxpayer to foot that bill, because it's at their pace. Now, we can't change the law. We can't ask a constitutional officer to, to move evidence faster, okay? But what we do have is the following. To the city manager's credit, between the time that the law changed up until tonight, evaluated places that we could potentially use in the city, and so far, went so far as looking for places that we can rent. All of those places cost more than getting it for free. So if we want to get into the storage rental business, we can, you know, it's more of a principled thing, you know, of who's responsible for, for what, but if, I, I don't know where the conversation is, is going, if we're going to have one, two, or out to bid, I would prefer to, 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 to put the, the onus and responsibility on the state attorney, because there are other...
That's not before us, sir.
There are other cities, Vice Mayor, right now, who may be working with the vendors that are in front of us, that aren't getting the same deal that we're getting.
That, that's also not important for us.
But it, but it makes me uncomfortable.
Okay.
It makes me uncomfortable negotiating against our other communities.
No one's negotiating here. We have a contract on, on seven A and seven B, at, at seven, A1 and seven A2. And our choices are one or the other, both or rebid. Those are the choices.
All right, I hope I answered your question.
And I appreciate it, I'm not trying to extend the meeting, but I wasn't here. And I can't speak to you guys outside of this setting. I mean, I called Tom to ask how his day's going, but I can't talk about business. So that's part of why I asked these questions here. So I apologize for extending the meeting a bit and pulling the items, but I wanted to understand, I will say, I, I'm not a huge fan of having, I, I can understand what Commissioner Good is saying when it comes to a pool, but that's not what we have here. We have two companies. I'm more in favor of having A, provide... I'm more in favor of having a provider, uh, and have that, whoever it is, I don't care which company, winning the business in a procurement. And if they're not doing a good job, we've talked a lot about thirty day outs and go to new companies. I don't know where I'm gonna land on this, but I pulled it off, I pulled these two items because my preference would have been, given the history, having one and having the other companies, like you said, as a, as a pool to back up the one company that was selected, if that makes sense.
Anyone else?
Yes, I think I, I want to clarify the point of having a pool of services because from my understanding, they change every week. So it's not necessarily a pool if one can't handle it, they're only reaching out to one particular vendor a week. So if they get overwhelmed, you, and Chief Argus, maybe you can answer this, if, at any point, have they been overwhelmed by the amount per week and have you had to call that second vendor? Or has it always simply been the, the switching back and forth on Sundays?
Just the switching back and forth.
Okay, so I, i- in this case, in my perspective, I don't necessarily think that a pool of services works because we're not using it in that manner. And I, if it hasn't happened in three years, I, unless, God forbid, a catastrophe happens, we're not going to need backup in that manner other than, you know, to have the, the switching. My preference is to have one because that's, I, from my perspective, what I, what I heard from different, um, levels at, um, the police department, my preference would be go out to bid on one and have obviously the two companies here bid on, on the one contract. But because I, I believe it's an efficiency for our police.
Are you motioning though? Point of clarification, is that a motion? I mean, I know I.
I will make a motion, yeah.
But, well, then the mayor has to weigh in because I technically motioned by reading it.
Well, okay.
No, it's a substitute motion.
Well, if she.
I would make the substitute motion to go out to bid.
But you have to, will you second it?
I'll, I'll second it if she's making the motion.
Okay, so the motion before us is to go out to RFP. That means that at least over the short run, uh, the contracts have to be extended, otherwise there'll be no tow trucks picking up. Is that correct, Mr. Dodge?
There is, there is a, a current contract. I don't believe it would be an ex, an extension because it's already in existence.
Because it expires on June eighteenth.
Uh, I don't know if you can get any, yeah, and it may need an extension. I don't know if you can go out for bid and have a response.
Question for the city attorney.
In time to, uh, find a new vendor, yeah.
Mister, Mister City Attorney?
Yes, Mayor.
Do we need an extension? Uh, do we need a commitment from the tow truck companies to continue the status quo until and unless the RFP is completed?
To answer the first question, the manager under the procurement code can extend the contract for a hundred and eighty days for the.
For a hundred?
One eighty, that's correct.
Is that enough time, Mr. Dodge?
Yes, it is.
Okay.
The second part of your question, Mayor, is, is the commitment from the vendors and your presence this evening to, to commit to the process.
I'm gonna get to that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Uh, in no, in, in, in no particular, now, I have one more procedural question for you, and it has to do with the way, which I found, which I find a little odd given the arrangement. But, okay, the way this motion is written. So you have one A, oh, A one and A two. Does that suggest two different votes? Or is this one item?
It, it's, it's one item, and it's a renewal of the, the existing way it's being handled.
Okay, so, 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 so these are subsets of the same item. So it's, it's only one item, one vote. Is that correct, Mr. City, City Attorney?
I'm sorry, it was, I was, I was delayed, but, but the question would be, yet again?
Yeah, so do we have to vote on Superior and Westway separately or together?
Before you make that decision, Mayor, before I answer that question, just remember, I was just reminded by, by Mr. Benia, and I appreciate that, by the way, the current contracts do not embrace the statutory change by evidentiary holes. That have, there would have to be some kind of acceptance of the state law applied to both contracts.
Okay, I'm gonna call, I'm gonna call the vendors up one at, at.
Thank you, Mayor.
One at a time. Superior Towing, are you here? Can you come forward, please? And state your name on the record.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Castillo and Vice Mayor Hernandez. My name's Sean Lascalzo, President of Ace Superior Towing.
Okay, so the city attorney's gonna ask you a question in a second, but my question to you is, uh, there is a motion before this commission to RFP this at the end of the, of the, uh, of the, of the, of the term of the contract. Okay, my question to you is, if, uh, if an extension beyond that term is necessary, are you willing to comply?
We'll continue to serve the city, city as we have.
Mister Attorney, did you have a question?
I do, just a follow-up question if I can, sir. And to the extent that you'd be willing and able to perform the service, which you said you, you can, which we appreciate, uh, for the city, on the city's behalf, um, the issue is the evidentiary holes. Uh, you would be able to comply with the state statute governing storage and protection of the vehicles, et cetera, correct?
Yes, sir.
At, at a venue of your selection or one which is actually in the proposed contract, correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir. Thanks, that's it, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you very much. Westway Towing.
One other question I'd like to have is, do you oppose continuing the way you're doing business today?
Not at all.
Okay. Westway Towing, can you come forward, please? State your name for the record.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, counsel. My name is Brett Holcomb. I am the president of Westway Towing.
If, uh, the motion before this commission is to, uh, uh, continue to have these contracts in place and to RFP at the end of the, of the term.
Yes.
If, if an extension is necessary in order to affect that procurement, are you, are you willing to accept, uh, an extension on, under the current terms?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Mister City Attorney?
Follow-up question, Mr. Holcomb, good evening. Welcome to Pembroke Pines.
Hold on.
May Mayor, yes?
You had a question for him?
I do, I do, Mayor. Uh, to the extent that you, you have offered up a contract, which is before the commission this evening, should the city manager, under the city's code of ordinances, extend that contract for the six months that's permitted? You will perform the service as you just indicated to the mayor, correct?
That's correct.
And to the extent that there is an evidentiary hole statute that's come into play since the signing of the first contract, you would comply with the state's requirement, in fact, perform and provide that service, correct?
That is correct.
And that service, yourself and Superior, would be at no cost to the city, correct, gentlemen?
Correct.
I see a nod of the head from Superior, and I see a yes on behalf of the speaker at the podium, which to me means yes, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Good?
Yeah, I, I just want to ask the same question. Are you willing, are, are you opposed to the way that you're doing business today?
No.
Okay, anyone else? The motion is clear.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mister Mayor, I have one other question.
Yes.
So, uh, if we are going out to RFP, that means then.
That's the motion.
We're, it opens up to all vendors.
That's correct.
Under, may I respond quickly, Mayor? The answer is the procurement code. Should you make the decision this evening by appropriate motion, would open up the, the process to any bidder that knocks on the door, correct?
I have a question for season.
And, hold on, um, go ahead, Tom.
I apologize.
Sure, um, go ahead, I, I'll.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yeah, uh, Commissioner, I apologize, I, I thought you were, um, uh, City Attorney.
Yes, sir.
There's a, there's a statutory cap on the fee that the ci, that all cities collect now for towing.
May I respond, Mayor?
Mister Cirillo, I guess?
Answer, I can answer the question, but he looks better than I do. So the end result is, it's still twenty-five percent.
Especially at this late hour.
Thank you very much, Commissioner, appreciate that.
So, so, um, so City Attorney, um, is that a cap regardless? Uh, because if we're gonna go out, if we're gonna go out to bid, can't be on price because those prices are now statutorily capped. Yes?
The answer is yes.
Okay, so is.
It's never been on price.
So is, the, so the last time this went out, three years ago, the commission approved the, um, uh, the makeup of the scoring sheets and, uh, and what the commission was looking Outside of canceling a con, uh, of not renewing a contract to two vendors who both said that they, they don't mind the agreement that's currently in place, um, the, there is no, the city is not at risk of, uh, having to spend more money because there's a cap on menstruation fees.
Even if they chose to, illogically or potentially unlawfully, it could not, correct?
Okay, all right, so, so we're not getting hurt on that part.
No, sir.
Okay.
Okay?
I remember my question.
Go right ahead.
Sorry. The, uh, the other question I have, that in the RFP, are we, uh, allowed to include as part of the services to hold these vehicles that are statutorily, uh, being referenced? I mean, are we able to put that in the bid and say, you, you have to do it?
The answer is, Mayor, respond, Mr. Mayor. The answer is yes. And if I can just supplement that answer and your question, to the extent that you would authorize and direct the manager this evening to proceed on an RFP or bid basis, you also want to make clear that you, whether you wouldn't want to not have a pool of vendors or you want to have a vendor, that, that would help staff, in my view, to figure out how best to, to bid it out.
Well, and then, I'm glad you said that because that also brought another question to me because, I mean, we spoke about the police department, that's how they operate, using, uh, the vendor. But we do have other, uh, departments that utilize this service, is that correct, Mister Manager?
I don't know.
So we have a breakdown with a vehicle.
I'm not aware of any other, our city departments that use it other than PD.
Fleet doesn't, uh, say, hey, I got a broken down car, or, hey, I got a broken down, uh, fire truck that needs to be transported somewhere, and, I mean, how does that operate?
If, if there was an accident, the, um, party who's involved in the accident has the freedom to call AAA or any one of their own.
Yeah, but not all things are accidents. I mean, vehicles break down.
Well, it doesn't really matter if they break down. If my car breaks down on the road and the police stop, I don't have to use the vendor that the city has. I can contact, uh, my AAA.
No, but I'm, these are city vehicles, this is a city contract. Maybe the procurement officer can explain to us who is the u, user of this services besides police. If it's just police, that makes it a little bit more easier for me to understand.
Good evening, Mark Gomes, procurement director. Uh, yes, some other departments utilize the, the towing services. Uh, when a car breaks down, they can call, it's part of the contract that they provide free, uh, free towing. Um, I don't think we've ever had a problem with any of the vendors, including A and B and the two current vendors.
Do we know if they operate, because Commissioner Rodriguez actually brought up a very interesting point about, uh, you know, the intent of the pool of services was to facilitate, uh, services. And then the police chief said, no, we only have them on one week and then the next week. And so it doesn't sound like they're, you know, crossing over because there's, there's a need. Uh, and I'm just wondering, is that how these other departments are utilized in a certain, are they just free to call whoever?
No, we, we rotated the same schedule as the police department. That, uh, that calendar is shared with all the departments so they can use it in the same fashion.
All right, okay. Uh, wait, Miss, go ahead, sorry. You good?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna support the police department's recommendation like I did last time. Uh, they want both of them. We just heard it. And that's what, and that's what I'm gonna support. Anything else? Any from the public? Yes?
Uh, Mayor Castillo, Vice Mayor Hernandez, Commissioners, my name is Sean Lascalzo, as I said before. Uh, the need for the two vendors was explicit in that those, if there was a natural disaster or something, a flood or hurricane, as there, we do have that kind of stuff that happens, the benefit was you have two companies. It doesn't have to be specific on those days because in a natural disaster, you're gonna reach out. And neither one of us, and I, I would speak for Brett on this point, if you needed our help, we're coming. We're just gonna come and take care of it. It doesn't have to be so rigid on a, on a week to week like you can't call.
No, but those, those are operational details that happen at the police department, but I appreciate your point.
And, uh, I'd like to say we've enjoyed the relationship so far, and I hope you choose, uh, Superior Towing. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
I, I would like to get a clarification from the police department. I don't believe, that was my interpretation of what their suggestion was. From my conversation, it seemed as though one, uh, towing company would make it more efficient, um, and effective timing-wise in order to make sure that the reports and everything, um, happen on time. Additionally, I'm speaking, um, from our conversation that in the case of two cars are, um, come up from the same crime, but it happens to be in different weeks, then we're having one, two cars in different places for the same crime. And maybe you can expand on that as well.
Yes, so, uh, Mayor, to clarify, the question was, would I prefer one over the other? No. Would the police department, they both are good companies, great companies, they, they, they meet or exceed standards. If the question is, is it easier for our personnel to have one company or two, the clear answer is one. Does it create an undue burden on the police agency? No, it does not to have two. But there are layers that need to be added. You have to have a rotational system, you have to have logs, you have to have follow-ups, you have to figure out where cars are. So there is an added layer for each one of those steps because we have two companies. But we have great employees who figure it out and do it well. There was one instance that was brought to my attention where due to the rotations every other week, one investigation with multiple vehicles that were recovered over an extended period beyond the seven-day period to meet the contractual obligations, those vehicles were stored at two separate facilities. So our investigators had to follow up and report to two, two different facilities for those, for that one case. So that's the example that, that was provided, Commissioner.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mister Mayor, I'd make just one more statement before we vote.
Okay.
So, um, I, I guess the, the biggest issue that I'm having right now is that we have the police chief making it clear that both companies meet or exceed standards. We have both companies that, um, we have both companies that said, um, you know, they, they don't object to the way that they're doing business today. And going out to RFP brings another layer of, of uncertainty, whether it's one or two, or three, or four, however that may go. So I'm having a really hard time with the RFP process all over again, knowing how complicated and, and, and difficult that process is. Um, and the fact that I can't get, chief can't say one is better than the other, and, and both companies seem to be in agreement with the way they're doing business. So going out to RFP is a very challenging, uh, jump for me right now, and I apologize for that, but I, that's how I'm gonna go.
But we would have an evaluation committee evaluate the, with the point system because we can't evaluate on pricing.
Correct. Yeah, it's, it's, it, I don't even know why cities are asked to do it, honestly. It, it should just, it should just be, it should, it should just be done somewhere else. And yet every city has to go through this thing and, okay, anything else? So the motion is to, uh, go, go to RFP, and both vendors have said that they will extend, uh, in the interim if it's necessary.
For the record, Mayor, should the, should the manager, which he will do, will, will seek an extension under the procurement code of a hundred, a hundred, a hundred and eighty days or there, thereabouts, correct?
Okay, clerk will call the roll.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
No.
Commissioner Good?
No.
Mayor Castillo?
No. So that motion fails. Um, we now go back to the, uh, uh, main motion, which would be, uh, to accept them both with, with the same, with the same, uh, uh, commitments that they have, that they have previously made, okay?
Mister Mayor, just for the record again, before the commission this evening are the two agreements, which are the same and which meet the same criteria.
That's correct.
And reach the same conclusion. If you approve one, you approve both, and you approve them as consistent with each other.
Any further discussion?
Just making sure that, Mister Attorney, you don't need to ask that same question again on this other vote.
No, because it, because the contract.
It's already been, it's already been done.
The contract reflects those conditions, Mister Commissioner, thank you.
Any, any, anyone from the public wish to speak on this, okay? Seeing none, clerk will call the roll. Clerk will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Nope.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes. By your vote, item seven is adopted, and at nine oh one, we are done with consent. We're done with consent now. Okay, item ten, city attorney.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commission, number ten is a motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 2025-04 on second and final reading with a public hearing for the record. Proposed ordinance number 2025-04 is an ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending Chapter 155 of the Land Development Code of the City of Pembroke Pines by specifically amending Section 155.401 entitled Zoning Map to rezone the approximate 9.8 acre parcel generally located at the northwest corner of Pembroke Road and Hyattus Road from B3, that's a general business designation, to C1, reference this commercial, approving an amended declaration of restrictive covenants for the subject property, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. For the record, Mayor, Commission, item number ten is on the floor for consideration and a public hearing. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much. That's moved by Commissioner Good. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice mayor. Any discussion? Any from the public? Clerk will call the roll.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, and by your vote, that passes unanimously.
For the record, Mayor, Commission, the permanent number for this is 2043. Next up is number 11, Mayor. Thank you.
Item 11, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Motion to adopt proposed ordinance number 2025-05 on second and final reading with a public hearing. Proposed ordinance number 2025-05, ordinance of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, amending Chapter 155 of the Land Development Code of the City of Pembroke Pines, also known as, amended as, Chapter 155.401 entitled Zoning Map, to rezone the approximate 1.8 acre parcel generally located south of Pines Boulevard and west of southwest 188th Avenue from B3, reference as general business, to the classification C1, better known as commercial, approving a declaration of restrictive covenants for the subject property, providing for conflicts, severability, providing for effective date. Item number 11 on the floor for consideration with a public hearing. Thank you, Mayor.
Item's moved by Vice Mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Seeing none? Any from the public? Seeing none? Clerk will call the roll.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
Yes.
Commissioner Schwartz?
Yes.
Commissioner Good?
Yes.
Mayor Castillo?
Yes, by your vote, that item passes.
For the record, Mayor, Commission, the permanent number is number 2044.
Thank you. Item 12.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. Resolution, this is an item that references a motion to approve, proposed resolution number 2025-R-05, which is a resolution, number 2025-R05, is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving a platnot amendment to delegation request to the Pembroke Lake South Platte for approximately 9.8 acre parcel generally located at the northwest corner of Pembroke Road and Hyattus Road from a B3, general business district, to C1, reference as commercial, authorizing the city manager or the city manager designee to take any action necessary to implement the intent of the resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date.
Is there a motion? Moved by the vice, uh, moved by.
He's still Vice Mayor in my heart.
Moved by Commissioner Good. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Vice Mayor Hernandez. Any discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show, motion passes unanimously.
For the record, Mayor, Commission, permit number is 3899.
Thank you. Item 14.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. Next up is number 13. It is a motion to approve, proposed resolution number, for the record, 2025, pardon me, yes, it's number 2025-R-06, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving a platnot amendment, that's a delegation request to the Waterman, that's W-A-T-E-R-M-E-N, Pines Platte, for the approximate 1.8 acre parcel of land generally located south of Pines Boulevard and west of southwest 186th Avenue, authorizing the city manager or.
I think you're reading, wait, wait, was, I think you're reading 13 again, right? We're on item 14?
No, we're on 13.
I'm sorry, my mistake. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Same moment, same, same reading. It's, it's, if I may continue, thank you. Authorizing the city manager or city manager's designee to take.
Sorry.
Am I good?
Go ahead.
Good enough, I guess. To take any action necessary to implement the intent of the resolution, providing for conflicts, severability, and for effective date. For the record, number 13 on the floor for consideration by the Mayor, Commission.
I beg your pardon. Is moved by the vice mayor. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. Any discussion? Seeing none? Any from the public? Seeing none? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show, passes unanimously. Item 14.
For the record, Mayor, Commission, the permit number is 3900, 3900. Number 14, for the record, if I may, Mayor, is the following. It's a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2025-R-09, which is a proposed resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, approving the local housing assistance plan as required by State Housing Initiatives Partnership Program Act, State Statute subsections 420.907 through 420.9079 of the Florida statutes, and rule in Chapter 67-37 Florida Administrative Code, that's the FAC, authorizing and directing the appropriate city officials to execute any necessary documents and certifications needed by the state, authorizing the submission of the local housing assistance plan for review and approval by the Florida Housing Finance Corporation, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing for an effective date with a public hearing as required by state law. Number 14 on the floor, Mayor, thank you. 14.
We're doing the public hearing first?
You can.
Does anyone wish to hear, does anyone wish to speak on this item? Does anyone wish to speak on this item? I'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion on the item?
Motion to move the item.
Motion's been made by Commissioner Rodriguez, seconded by the vice mayor. Any discussion on the item?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Super briefly, I want to thank our communications team for answering, I assume it was them because it's all about, or, it was, it was Mike, based on what the communications team has put out regarding home repair grants and the first-time home buyer's assistance. I did notice, though, however, the posts were from July 31st, 2024, and I am asking our communications team to repost those. Sorry.
She wants them reposted.
Mike Stam, Director of Planning and Economic Development, Assistant City Manager. So these funds run out, so we try not to post or share when we don't have available funds. So we continue to post the down payment assistance program.
That's the one that I'm talking about.
That one goes out.
It, it was answered in there that the other one, we wouldn't be able to do, but that the home buyer, that's the one I was talking about.
Yeah, that one's on a regular loop, and it goes out regularly.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay. Anything further on 14? Anything from the public? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously.
For the record, Mayor, Commission, permit number is 3901. Next up, number 15.
Number 15.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. Number 15 is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2025-R11, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, respectfully requesting an in-person joint meeting between the City Pembroke Pines City Commission and the Broward County Commission to discuss the potential conveyance and transfer of the existing Broward County Utility Service area located within and abutting the Pines Village neighborhood to the City of Pembroke Pines, providing for transmittal, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, providing for an effective date. Number 15 on the floor, Mayor, Commission, thank you.
This is moved by Commissioner Good. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by the vice mayor. Any discussion? Any from the public? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Show, motion passes unanimously.
Mayor, just one comment for the record, there's a blank in the title and in the body with regard to a date certain. We, we could not predict the answer of your particular decision-making this evening, nor can we predict the county commission. To the extent possible, we will coordinate with the city administration and with the, through them, through the county, county staff as well to request hopefully the receipt of this resolution and their agreement to have a, have a, hold a joint public meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Number 16.
Thank you, Mayor. Number 16, for the record, is a motion to adopt proposed resolution, I'm sorry, the number for that is number, forgive me, is 3902, 3902. Next up is number 16.
Yes, excuse me.
Proposed resolution number 2025-R, number 12 is a resolution of the.
Can you stop for me? I'm sorry. In regarding to the last ordinance, do we have, did you reference the date in which we were going to ask for that?
I did. Either you can set a date this evening, or we can add a date to the final version. Getting a date would be, I'm sorry, getting a date would be very useful, but that requires all of you to commit to a date on that resolution.
So, I, I'm sorry, I, I let that.
I know.
I missed that, I apologize. I wish somebody would have.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Tap me, but, yeah, this, to, this is for us to meet with the county commissioners to talk about, you know, taking over their service area. And because of the urgency of, of what's going on there, we were looking at maybe being able to offer them a date in which we would be able to meet with them. Is there a date that we can meet with them there? Is it within the next week or two?
The easiest dates for them would be, would be on a Tuesday, but I don't know, I don't know what.
May, may I suggest that we will accept any date that they provide?
Well.
Well, they might push it out forever.
Well, we, we ask them within, within the next, vice, there you go again, Commissioner Good, a sense of urgency is here, right? So your district, you're asking them within 30 days, you're asking them within two weeks, what are you asking?
Within two weeks, and on a Tuesday. We just give them a date, and if they say no, then they'll come back and see.
And we'll go see them.
Tuesday, the 22nd of April, and Tuesday, the 6th of May, is their upcoming meetings.
Okay, Tuesday, 26th, 22nd of April, unfortunately, I am out of the country, so.
So let's go after that. What was the other one?
May 6th, May 6th. For consideration, their meetings start at 10:00. Usually you don't know what time they finish up at. My suggestion would be to ask for an early 9:00 AM meeting.
Okay.
Because from my perspective, that, that's the best schedule, or a time certain of 2:00, 3:00 PM.
Can we direct the city manager to get with the county administrator?
We've already done that. We've, I've, I've, I've placed phone calls to county administration. I've also called our county commissioner, who, for that area, who was very, very supportive, and, but we have not gotten a response.
Supportive as in they're going to put something on the agenda to give us the service area, or supportive that they're willing to meet with us?
They haven't returned my phone call.
Wow.
So, so I think, I think that, I think that this is the proper next step.
So 9:00 AM, Tuesday, May 5th, May 6th? I mean, we just put it down as a date, this is our resolution to them, and then they can go ahead and say we can't, right? They can come back with an, with an alternate time, and then we'll let staff kind of help manage us, but Tuesday, May 6th, 9:00 AM.
And the location would be?
Their, their place.
Their house, yes.
Yeah.
And we would coordinate with the clerk to get that inserted by tomorrow.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney. I'm sorry, I missed that.
And you all will, will get that on calendars, please, thank you. Item 16.
Thank you, Mayor, Commission. 16 is a motion to adopt proposed resolution number 2025-R12, which is a resolution of the City Commission of the City of Pembroke Pines, Florida, authorizing the mayor, the vice mayor, the city manager, the city clerk, and the finance director to sign vouchers and checks, to make deposits and withdrawals, and authorize transactions on investments pursuant to the city's investment policy ordinance and as provided for by law, providing for conflicts, severability, providing for effective date. Number 16 on the floor for consideration. Thank you, Mayor.
So moved.
Moved by the vice mayor, moved by Commissioner Good, seconded by the vice mayor. Any discussion? Get ready to sign stuff while I'm away. Any from the public? No? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries unanimously.
For the record, Mayor, Commission, that number is number 3903 for the record. Thank you.
Okay. Item 17. Let's see if we can get through this quickly. So this is discussion on possible action to appoint a director, alternate, and second alternate voting delegate to the Broward League of Cities for 2025 and 2026. This item was deferred from the last commission meeting in order to give Commissioner Schwartz time to review his records, and also to review the attendance sheet that was provided by the Broward League, which indicates that between the time of his appointment and our last city commission meeting, he attended no Broward League of Cities meetings. We used that time also to ask the city attorney to audit the, the attendance sheet from the Broward League. He is also the general counsel for the Broward League of Cities, and he wrote us an extensive document that included the bylaws, the meeting minutes, and other materials, which seemed to make it clear that the attendance sheet was correct. Commissioner Schwartz, did you have an opportunity to review your records and the attendance sheet and the city managers', city attorneys' memo?
Yes, Mayor, and thank you for the opportunity. So the city attorney's memo went out prior to my review of what the city attorney was providing all of us, and there was, there was an error in what the city attorney gave us, but it's not the city attorney's fault for what he gave us. He gave what the league provided the city attorney. So I spoke with city attorney Paul Hernandez, I spoke with Mary Lou Ty, the executive director, I spoke with President Felicia Brunson, and Mary Lou says that there is an error, and it can only be corrected at the next board of directors meeting, so that's, that's the intent of that now.
What is the error?
The, the error is I attended, I attended the, a meeting that is not in the, in the record. Now, Mayor, one of the things that.
But you're, but you're.
Mayor, allow me, please?
Hold on a second. But your, but your, but your attendance was, you attended the meeting, but they didn't record you?
Correct. I even spoke at it. That, that was the craziest thing.
Did you, did you, did you arrive after roll call?
No, I was actually the first one there. I was there before everybody else.
How strange.
I know. As a matter of fact, it was, anyway, so I, I, I report, when, when, when you asked me for the league report, I reported what was discussed at the meeting, and anyway. So going forward, what I found, what I found refreshing about this exercise, to be quite honest with you, having, having been an alternate for 12 and, and having the privilege of serving as a director this year, it was the first opportunity for me to see the league from a different perspective. I attended meetings with Vice Mayor Siple, but she was always lead, and I never really got into how the league operated. So Mayor Brunson and I had a very, very good conversation last Thursday, and there, there are, we've identified ways that the league and cities both can be, can be better at doing what we do. And certainly, you know, I want to apologize to my colleagues if my communication wasn't enhanced enough. It wasn't my intention to not communicate, but let me, let me explain in, in, from the perspective that I had. I never knew that when the league sent out meetings, that the alternates weren't included in that list until the city attorney's audit, because it was always a blind copy. So I presumed that the information coming down from league's office was being disseminated to all of us for sunshine protection as a blind copy. And I'll go a step further. My calendar has the alternates and me as far as RSVP. So, I, I never, I never, I never anticipated, one, that, that there was gonna be an issue. And here's the other thing. And I asked the city attorney this question, because he's been doing pro bono for the league now for three decades. In the bylaws of the league, it says if you miss three meetings, you're automatically removed.
Mm-hmm.
And there's never been an elected official, please, city attorney, correct me, there's never been an elected official removed by the league for an absence.
Mm-hmm.
So, I think that there's room for improvement. You know, I, I certainly, you know, would ask my colleagues for consideration to continue. But if someone wants to self-nominate, you know, that's, you know, that's probably of the board. I serve at the pleasure of you. With, with respect to voting, because that, that was, for me, for me, that was really important, because what, what really irritated me as an alternate is the way that the board had functioned with respect to, to, to waste disposal, with respect to SRO. And I was hell-bent on finding out how in the world we put in that position.
Commissioner Schwartz, if I can interrupt you for a second.
Sure.
So, the league held a meeting on September fifth, twenty-twenty-four.
I was not there.
Okay. The league held a meeting on November seventh, twenty-twenty-four.
I was there. I was there, I was there, Carl Springs.
The league held a meeting on January ninth, twenty-twenty-five.
I was, I was out of town.
The league held a meeting on February sixth, twenty-twenty-five.
I was on my way and something came up.
The league held a meeting on March sixth, twenty-twenty-five.
I was unable to make it.
Okay.
And I was at the, I was at the meeting last, last month, uh, last week, rather.
I can get past that you might have missed some meetings. But that the alternate wasn't told that you weren't gonna be there. It's sorta difficult to get past.
And again, if my communication could have been better.
It's not that it could have been better, it's that it needed to be existent. I got no notification whatsoever, the girls, sorry, Karen, Michelle and Julie had no notification because they don't have access to your calendar either. So, how, where's the enhancement when there wasn't any kind of communication?
Commissioner, I, I can, I have no, I have no issue sharing my email with all of you, listing one of our assistants as host, me as being RSVP and Commissioner Rodriguez. The, the minutes, I'll be honest, the, the minutes, I'm doing reports, we have minutes that are available to all of us. If there was an issue, I, I wish, I wish it would have been, I wish I would have been asked when it occurred, not now. Because, again, the board of directors meeting, there's no orientation for any of us. Was there an orientation? Did you receive a packet from the league?
No, but I understand that if I'm, I'm a delegate to an agency, I attend my meetings.
You asked her a question, let her answer.
If I'm a delegate, I, I don't even, Julie puts things into my calendar, but I have my due diligence of additionally having my own personal calendar, which I, one, copy everything into, and then any organization, whatever they, you wanna call them, if they have a meeting, I put it in my calendar, whether it's I'm attending or not attending, and if I have the duty of attending, I do my very best to attend. And then if I had an alternate for any of the things that I, that I participate in, I would have let them know.
Okay.
We can't throw it on, on.
Listen, I'm taking responsibility here, okay, all I'm saying is, is that, is that I, I made, I used, I could have, I could have used better judgment in the information I was receiving, but I will tell you this, that Mayor Brunson told me last week that so long as I am bringing the information that actually occurred, because it, it, I'm not putting this on the city attorney. I let, I let him know, please, I ain't know about excuses, I ain't know about the excuse absence thing. But there were, there were times where I said, listen, I, I'm trying to get there, but I might not make it. At that point, it's unfair, it's unfair for me to ask you to drop everything and go to Pompano, now, now, listen.
I would gladly drop everything and go to Pompano if that's what the city would call for.
Okay, so, look, I, listen, Mayor, I like to move forward. If someone wants to self-nominate, self-nominate. If, if you wanna give me another opportunity, I welcome that as well. I've served, I've served, I've served with, I've served for thirteen years and it's allowed me to, 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 to to get things done for this city that had it not been for those relationships, I would not have been able to do that. I enjoy the league, the league does some good things. I disagree with some of the things that the league does, we can't agree with everybody. So, that's where I'm at.
Okay, I'm gonna recognize Vice Mayor in a second, but I just wanna say this, okay? So, I went back and I took a look at some of the topics that the league was talking about over the course of the last year. Incineration, solid waste report, school redefinition. They received several separately from the solid waste discussion, the solid waste group updates. Bills taking effect. The certex program was, was extensively discussed. The twenty-twenty-five Broward League legislative agenda, the property tax issue, sovereign immunity and local business tax, among other issues that were discussed, those issues in particular were voted on.
No, sir, no, I'm gonna correct you, I'm gonna correct you and I'm gonna be.
Go right ahead.
The, there's only two times that the, that the league votes. One is the, is the.
No, 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 excuse me, you're correct, you're correct.
Is the treasury report?
I, I misspoke, I misspoke.
And two, and two is the minutes.
I misspoke, it wasn't, it wasn't.
I cannot bind the city, if there were, if there was anything, if there was anything that the league had recommended, I would bring it back to get approval.
Hold on, I have the floor, hold on. I just, I misspoke, not voted on, heard about with, at, at, at those particular meetings. And at each of the city commission meetings, you were given an opportunity to speak about what you heard at these meetings at the Broward League. And I was led to believe by your testimony at the, at, at the meetings that you were there. But you weren't there, you were only there once and I'm, I'm sorry, but to me, that feels like a betrayal of trust. I, we didn't have our person at this, at these meetings where these incredibly important things were discussed and I can't get past, I, I can get past, sir, that you couldn't make certain meetings, that happens to everybody. But that the phone calls weren't made to the, to the, to the alternate, when you yourself were an alternate and knew what the rules were or should have known what the rules were. And that we had this many vacancies, that's never happened in Pembroke Pines before. And that's the part that really, really sorta disturbs me, is that you couldn't, you, you just didn't keep the commitment that you made to this board, Vice Mayor.
Woo, it's uncomfortable up here. You miss it, Mayor Ordis, you miss being up here?
Waiting for my wife.
I'm sorry. This is uncomfortable, I respect all my colleagues, I'm going to motion that we appoint as director to the Broward League of Cities Commissioner Maria Rodriguez, that we appoint as alternate, I, I am going to nominate myself as an alternate and Commissioner Schwartz as second alternate voting delegate to the Broward League of Cities for twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six.
There's been a motion, is there a second?
I'll second, I'll second the motion.
And there's a motion and a second, any discussions?
I would have nominated you, but you have MPO and I, I didn't wanna add to your plea.
Okay. Any, any from the public, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Show passes unanimously, thank you very much.
I wanna thank my colleagues for continuation of, now, it's gonna be fourteen years, thank you, I appreciate it.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is.
Eighteen, Mr. Mayor.
Sorry?
Eighteen.
Eighteen.
May I?
Go right ahead.
With your permission, Mayor, Commission, eighteen is a motion to approve the technical memorandum produced by the city's general water consultant Correa titled PFAS, better known as PFAS Treatment Feasibility Evaluation, dated March of twenty-twenty-five and to approve a request to advertise an RFQ and to procure engineering services to design the recommended improvements by waiving section number thirty-five point nineteen subsection A of the city's code of ordinances, which requires all sealed competitive solicitations to be presented to the city commission for consideration prior to advertisement and providing for an effective date, that's the motion.
Is there a motion?
Eighteen.
I won't move it.
Moved by the vice mayor, is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Rodriguez. I think that we need to approve this as quickly as possible and get that stuff out of the water. And I'm impressed with the presentation that was made at our workshop by the, by the utility staff. They, they did a very, very good job, I'm impressed by the professionalism of the report. And I'm impressed that we can put in a viable solution to this problem, which is disturbing many people, understandably, within our community, in a way that will not raise water fees. Is that correct, Mr. Dodge?
Our estimation is that it will not raise the rates. However, once we get into it, we'll have to reevaluate it in about three years, but it doesn't anticipate we would.
Well, let's hope, let's, let's hope that word holds up, because, and this is why, and this is why careful financial management is so important. When an issue comes up, we now have reserves that will deal with the problem. I would like to ask, in order to kick off our discussion, I would like to ask utilities to come forward and if they could employ their best regular language, because this gets very technical and there are many abbreviations involved. And just so that your water customers, Mr. Bailey, should understand what this is about and what we're doing and what hope they have to get the PFAS out of the water. If you could just play, in, in, in plain language, if you could just explain it to them.
Mike Bailey, utilities director, for the very last time.
We will miss you.
Same here, sir.
But you're very well, you're very well backed up.
No, absolutely. Well, so, Mayor, you, you put it very well when we discussed it earlier in the workshop today. Our consultant has produced a recommended solution to comply with EPA's new PFAS regulations. And within, with, you know, unless there's any unforeseen's, within four years, we will begin operation of a newly constructed system to do exactly that.
So, you're gonna bring in a new component, which has to be designed and then constructed? It'll take a little while to do. But based on the evaluation of the, of the engineers, your goal is to have zero PFAS in the water?
Correct, the, the rule states four parts per trillion, but that's the detection limit for the lab equipment, that's, so it's zero.
And we wanna try to outperform the, the, the minimum.
It's essentially zero.
Right. And, well, I just, I, I think it's phenomenal that science has gotten to where we can, we can finally deal with this issue and, and move on. Nothing more important to the city of Pembroke Pines than its health and its water quality. And I'm very, very proud of you all for the work that you're doing. And I'm very, very thankful that you brought us this, this good news, it took a while to bring. But you all did a very, very thorough job. It took me a long time to get through that report, it's very dense, it's very complicated, it's very scientific. I did the very, very best that I could as someone who is not an engineer. But it really, really did give me hope that, that this will work and I wanna thank you all.
On behalf of the team, you're welcome.
Vice Mayor?
I wanted to thank you and wish you well in retirement, it is difficult to read, but it's incredibly important, so I actually spent the weekend trying to understand it. I'm, I'm not very intelligent, apparently, because I really still, don't get it.
No, you're very intelligent.
But I appreciate your, your hard work, I, I don't wanna forget the report, I also want to thank you for your years of service to our city. And Dr. Walsh, I'll be calling you to better understand a lot of what we will need to be doing and undertaking. Because it is very, I hate to use the word dense, I'll use another word, it's very technical and the average resident in a city of a hundred and seventy-one thousand is gonna need it dumbed down a, a great deal to understand what is happening, what would happen with our water when this plan goes through and we start executing beyond the procurement phase, but thank you very much for your service.
My daughter Caroline described it perfectly, so you're going to filter the water through a gizmo and take the cooties out? I said, yes, that's correct.
That, yes, that's.
Is that basically right?
That's essentially right.
Vice Mayor?
I think that's a, a good way of putting it, but that's a, that's a good prelude into probably part of what your consultants are doing is to, you know, develop the message points that the, the average consumer is able to understand what it is you're doing and why are they, you know, probably gonna see, even though the mayor says no increase, there is going to be operating costs that are gonna continue to increase as well, we're just still gonna see that. So, and because it's a fifty-four million dollar minimum ticket item, you know, people are gonna see that too. So, having them educated along the way all the time, so they're not surprised, et cetera, et cetera. But the only other thing that I'm concerned about is, you know, that we're taking this out of a process that's, you know, by code. So, I understand the urgency of things, but I still would want to receive a copy of the document that goes out to bid.
Sure.
So, we don't have to wait and put it in, in, in a book and get it voted on, but the moment it goes out to the streets, I'd like to be able to be aware of what that document looks like.
I'm happy to commit successor to doing all that stuff.
I know, I know, I'm looking.
Make sure we all get it.
I'm looking at him too.
Anything else? Commissioner Schwartz?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner Good, you were reading my mind, the waiver of thirty-five nineteen A allows us to get out on the street quicker, but it, it, the, the public needs to know that they're gonna see what, what the bid specs are. I was asked by a resident to ask the question, I inquired by the city attorney, Jonathan Bonilla, put it in the, put it in the memo and you clarified it even better than cootie, so that was good, I like that.
Commissioner Rodriguez?
No comments, just thank you so much for bringing the explanation to us in a little bit easier fashion to understand.
I'm, I'm not as smart as him either.
But I really appreciate the, the guidance on this, I was able to visit the water plant one month ago, maybe a little bit more. And it was a little bit easier for me to, to understand what was going on, or at least with the designs put into, into the presentation. So, I appreciate the time that you were, that your team gave to me when I went to go visit and all the work that is put into this, so that our water is better for our residents.
A pleasure.
Thank you very much, a motion's been made and seconded, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Show passes unanimously, Godspeed and thank you. Reports of the league and MPO representatives. Commissioner Rodriguez?
No reports, other than the general meeting is tomorrow at five PM, no, five-thirty PM. I'll be in attendance.
Okay, Commissioner Good?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor, so, one of, there's been a substantial change in the, in one of the project or programs that the MPO's been doing for several years and I know maybe Commissioner Rodriguez might feel disheartened by it, but it's called Complete Streets, it no longer exists, the C-Slip projects. They're, they're continuing with the program, they're calling it Roads for Economic Vitality, R-E-V. So, it went from Complete Streets and Other Localized Initiative, C-Slip, to Roads for Economic Vitality, REV.
Maybe it's better marketing.
Well, it's actually a sad thing that they, that this happened. The, the issue is that C-Slip has this word, it's called Other Localized Initiatives. And typically, what happens is when we go and we put, we ask for grant monies to do projects, you know, complete streets typically, you know, you take a roadway, you put bike lanes, you put maybe streetlights and sidewalks and some other maybe traffic devices that help calm the road and make it more friendly for pedestrians and other modes of transportation. It's basically stripped out a lot. For instance, no more sidewalks and no more shared use paths are gonna be considered in these programs anymore. And that is probably one of the biggest component to a complete street or a C-Slip project, because put people on sidewalks instead of keeping them in the road. So, those, those opportunities are gone now. And there's a few other things that, that are gonna be missing too. And even the MPO really doesn't fully quite understand this. And as a matter of fact, they're not even taking any applications for this cycle, so they're gonna be missing a cycle. And then on top of it, money is, you know, the projects are starting to really escalate. And see, and this is one of the problems that they have when they do planning. And see, and this is one of the problems that they have when they do planning and programming and awards for projects, because what happens is you get in the year one, year two, year three, year four, or year five cycle. If you're in the fifth year, that means you've got to wait five years before you can go ahead and get your project funded and done. Well, in five years, the last five years, the cost escalation has been tremendous in terms of getting projects done. So what might have cost a hundred bucks today, five years from now, might cost 200 bucks, so over 100% increase. So they're, they're also challenged with money and maybe that's why they changed the program, but it's important for us all to be aware that those grant opportunities are no longer available through the MPO. And that's my report, Mr. Mayor.
Well, it's a sad, sad news.
Can you send that? I see that you're reading off of that. I believe if that's being sent at the end of the, including in the minutes, if that's being sent, I think in the last time, the MPO report was sent to us as well.
You got reports to send us too?
Yours are more.
I'm just reporting out.
She just wants to read it.
I got it.
Okay. Reports of the city manager, city attorney.
Yes, Mayor. At the last meeting, the administration was requested to provide you with a report on charter school and charter school volunteer hours. We have provided you with a detailed memo that was sent to you that basically explains the many opportunities that parents have to meet their requirement of the 30 hours and it was sent to you in, in an email today.
Yeah, I, you know, I can, I can only tell you, I can only tell you that as, as someone who had two children, and I know several of us have, that graduated from charter schools, I felt that parent involvement in the, throughout the term of, of both of my daughters in charter was important. And I actually look forward to it. I did all kinds of things in the charter schools while they were there, Lisa did as well, and it was important. It connected me to the students, it connected me to the school, it connected me to the teachers. It made me more aware of what my kids were doing in school. Frankly, I think the public schools should do the same thing. They, they may not be able to, but we are, and I think it's part of what makes our schools different organically. When charter schools were created, parents were always a big part of it. It's, it's, the, the whole thing is parent choice and parent involvement in, in education. I think that's a healthy thing. And I'm sorry that there are barriers to, to parent, more parent involvement, whatever, whatever those parent, you know, whatever those barriers might be. The, whether it's 30 hours or 25, Vice, Commissioner, whether it's 20 hours or 40, I, I, I can't tell. I, you know, but I, I do know that the 30 hours seems to be working. There are occasionally rumblings that I have heard, I mean, during my time as a parent there and afterwards, but by and large, it works and the parents are used to it, they sign up for it and I don't know that, I don't know that much is gained by going to the district and asking them to change our charter or, you know, I know that it was in the application, but the application is part of the charter. So I, I really just don't know that, that that's something that, that I'm necessarily for. It would be a different story if we got a huge petition from parents saying, we can't do this anymore, but we haven't. And so, I don't know. That's, that's sort of how I feel about it. Those are my two cents. Whatever you guys want to do is what we do. This is the governing board of the charter school system and if you all want to change it, you have every right.
Well, I just want to make it, my presentation to that was not to change it on any kind of permanent basis, it was to make an exception for this, for this year because of the fact that some people may have gotten used to attending a program that, that wasn't made available to them. And so that's all I did was ask that if, if that was something that they relied on.
That's a good point. Can I ask, is there, is there a way, Mr. Dodge, that, that if a parent comes up a little bit short this year because we had these problems holding these events, that, that we can provide them with some, some assistance?
Mayor, every, every year before the end of the year, we notify parents if they are short. We've listed many, many items and ways parents can achieve those hours. And it doesn't necessarily mean that it's at a after hour event, we have workshops, there are so many different opportunities for parents. And if you look at that memo, you'll see, you'll see a list of about eight or nine pages
Which is really very impressive.
Of opportunities. And some of them are, are very valuable to the parents because just as raising positive children is very important, there are other educational opportunities and trainings for parents. We don't believe that's an issue, but every year toward the end, we give parents ample knowledge if they're three hours short, two hours short, and give them an opportunity to make up those hours.
Thank you.
And it really hasn't been an issue for us for the last 27, 28 years.
Mr. Bonilla, I see you drawing near.
Well, first and foremost, Assistant City Manager Jonathan Bonilla, I wanted to introduce the maker of that report that you all received.
Yes.
This is our Office of Innovative Learning, Jazza Rodriguez. And so she did a very thorough job with regards to explaining what the volunteer process is. Not only did we list opportunities that they've had as of right now, which as you can see, they range between 200 to 300 hours that they've received this year, there's approximately between 70 to 150 hours that they can still do all the way through the deadline of this particular school year. So I'm a firm believer that we provide ample opportunities to our parents to do these hours in, in very various manners, from remote, from different accommodations. And as you stated, there is an appeal, an, an hardship process that can be brought up that will go to the hardship committee, which is comprised of our principals, but that's, that's what we have. Mrs. Zola, I don't know if you want to add?
No, I just, I just, I want to thank you for, for the information that you provided and I just want you, I just want you to make aware, I mean, we didn't, we haven't taken a vote or anything, but I think everyone sort of feels the same way, that we had some issues this year and please keep that in, in mind when you, when you talk to parents who, you know, may have missed an opportunity. And I just want to thank you for the work that you do. And for your very comprehensive information, which was very helpful. Okay?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, if I may just, I've, I've never questioned whether you all have oper, you know, never questioned at all. But I do pay attention, I did watch over the last several years, the marketing that went into the programming, the encouragement. I'm talking about the pot, raising positive children, you know, the intention and what happened was it grew from a few to quite a few. And again, like I say, looking at the formula, you know, yeah, you might have a lot of opportunities, but I might not make it out there seven o'clock in the morning to help out because that just doesn't work for my schedule, but that's an opportunity. But I can go seven o'clock at night, bring my kids, bring my parents and probably knock out all my volunteer hour in one single setting. You see what I'm saying? And we made that available and that's all I'm, I was just trying to focus in on was we created a situation that we didn't, that we weren't able to keep up with and gave expectations. And, and Mr. Mayor, and the only thing, and, and at the time too, I was saying, I wasn't saying for everybody, I was just saying also, if they were saying, hey, I'm, I, I thought you were going to have that and I didn't go to that, well, you had to prove that you were an attendee in past raising positive children programming as well in order to make that claim that was your go-to volunteer service hour completion, so. But you guys are doing great, no complaints.
And going forward, we will not have that problem again, so you, you, this is now yours. No one here will have a hand in it in any way, shape or form. Go and have as many sessions as you need and know that we'll, we're here to support you. Okay? Thank you. Anything else on, on the reports?
No, Mayor.
City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening. In the backup, you'll find the item with regard to the Monarch Hill landfill, the site in the city, it's actually in Coconut Creek, unincorporated Broward, but it butts Coconut Creek and Deerfield Beach. The backup shows you the following, and I'll try to be quick, I know the time is limited this evening. The county commission in February essentially approved a text amendment to the county, county's own land use plan that permitted the Monarch Hill site, which is run by WCI, WMI Waste Management, allow them to expand the width and the height of their landfill. The county owns, the county is, controls the zoning and land use on that property, but the folks at WMI Waste Management, they actually own the property and they requested that the county commission consider an expansion, make it wider, make it taller. Coconut Creek didn't like that. They essentially objected, they appeared at the hearing, which occurred in, last in February, February of this year, objected to the increasing size of the land use of that property and essentially they, they filed their objection accordingly. County commission voted to do it, which meant to essentially expand by height and by width for a number of years into the future. Essentially that was made known by a majority vote of the county commission. Coconut Creek filed suit. Coconut Creek filed suit in the Broward Circuit Court before Judge Hames, challenging the land use plan amendment, essentially suggesting that the land use plan amendment was inconsistent with the county, county, county's land use plan, the state plan and the regional plan. May sound familiar because a similar lawsuit was filed against the city by Memorial, not to, not to pick a scab on you, but the end result is that they filed a similar lawsuit challenging this city's decision on land use matters as well. So Coconut Creek filed suit. Deerfield Beach joined in that lawsuit. The lawsuit as of Monday this past week, the 14th of April, was abated by agreement of the parties and Judge Hames signed an order on Monday, abating the proceeding. And what that means is there's been a request for Chapter 164 mediation or 164 dispute resolution. There's a state statute which the city commission has some familiarity with in years past. It's called the Florida Government, Governmental Conflict Resolution Act, Chapter 164. It is a process. We argued that same process before the judge in our case, Judge Robinson, with regard to Memorial litigation, that, that Memorial had to go through the 164 process to get to the lawsuit. What, what the Coconut Creek also retained lawyers, the same lawyers, to file a separate action in Tallahassee before the, under the Administrative Procedures Act, challenging that action with the state in a separate, what's called a Chapter 120 proceeding, which is administered before an administrative law judge. Two pending matters, both are currently abated. The county commission staff is required to have a meeting, which is manager to manager, commission to commission, mediation if possible, and then trial of the case if it doesn't otherwise resolve. The initial stages of this discussion are currently in place and what's, what it's essentially called is the conflict assessment proceeding. The key factor for the commission is as follows. The parties to the litigation are now in the 164 proceeding and the primary conflicting government entities are not the city of Pembroke Pines. And I'm going to get to the next reason why it's important to consider. Coconut Creek, Deerfield Beach, Broward County are the primary conflicting governmental entities. Drew Myers and his email, which I've shared with you, it's in the backup, because of the fact that they thought it was a countywide issue and of countywide importance, asked every city attorney in the county to turn to the city commission, inquire of them whether or not they as a city wanted to participate in the Chapter 164 proceeding. And that email is attached to and made part of the record in the backup this evening. The next phase of which, for the record, is on May the 7th, 2025, at 2:00 PM, in the county governmental center. The city Pembroke Pines has an interesting challenge. Down the street from the city Pembroke Pines on Sheraton Street in the city, pardon me?
Yeah.
Is called the BIC landfill. You might have heard of it. That's owned by the county. The BIC landfill, I actually need to get a definition because it seems to be elusive to get the answer, but it's better known as the Broward Intram Contingency landfill. It exists, it's been there for 100 years, been there a long time. It's not technically dormant, it still does accept yard waste and things like that, but not the major stuff that goes to Monarch Hill or elsewise. In January of this year, the county commission considered an item submitted by Commissioner Bogan of the county commission, which is a motion to direct the county staff to take all necessary and prudent actions as expeditiously as practicable to ensure sufficient landfill capacity in the Broward County landfill formerly known as the BIC landfill is available for contingencies or other unplanned situations, including to pursue any permitting, licensing or other authorizations needed to, for such capacity. That was Vice Mayor Bogan. This item was tabled indefinitely by the county commission at that time. However, the county commission did and does, has jurisdiction countywide for any property it owns. The land use designation that was modified for the Monarch Hill site impacts the site in Southwest Ranches, correct, Mike? It's under, yeah, but, but the, but the county, the, you say Mike, you get a dozen mics in the room. The, the, what's, the key factor is, is that, that it, Mike, just confirm that if you can.
Sorry. Mike Stamis, the city manager, director of planning and economic development. Just, you parse your words a little bit.
I did.
The land use is site specific to the Monarch Hill site. The zoning is both the Monarch Hill site, which is ASIC zoning, as well as the BIC site. So it was the zoning, which was a countywide change, not the land use. The land use was site specific to Monarch Hill.
So you have before you the BIC land site, which is owned by the camp, by the county, which is technically speaking on hold as the motion conditionalized it. However, the zoning applicable to any ASIC property countywide where the county owns the property has been adopted. It's being applied, however, to the Monarch Hill site. Why are you being asked these questions? Well, because the county commission's lawyer, Drew Myers, contacted every city attorney in the county and said, we need your, we need to know what you want to do because the parties have agreed that the door's open to come to the table and participate. And that's the words that's in the email. What does that mean? Well, it means a number of different things legally and I'm not trying to bore you with the details, but they're important. What's important is you're not one of the parties in the Chapter 164, thank goodness. However, you have the ability, if you so chose, to direct your city manager, your city attorney, to attend the meeting on May the 7th as a party neutral, as it were, to gather the information to make a decision about what role you want to play, if any, with regard to this currently pending litigation. The cap, yes, I'm sorry.
Were you done?
No, almost, promise. The, you should know that, that for whatever reason, no other city to date has actually offered up the interest in appearing at the May 7th meeting while they go through the conflict assessment process, which is open to the public and also being advised inviting cities to attend as well. I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor, I'd be happy to answer.
If there was a, if there was direction to appear, what are the options in terms of the, the status that we could elect in terms of an appearance or an involvement?
Good question. The 164 process does not legally apply to this city as a, as a, as a warring party, as the case may be. However, you could attend the, the assessment process and you could attend as a party neutral, but at some point in time, as this litigation progresses, if it does, you may have to make a decision whether you want to side with the county or side with the cities who are suing the county. Because at this point, the difference between Monarch Hill and BIC are significant to this city because BIC is down the street, Monarch Hill is, is up the road in northeast or northwest Broward County. So the answer is you could do nothing. Many cities, by the way, and I can turn to Jacob Horowitz, who attended the Cooper City meeting, and they chose not to take any action. I think Southwest Pembroke Park didn't, Pembroke Park did not choose. No, no city has yet jumped into the mix of attending the May 7th meeting or participating in any fashion, but they don't have the BIC landfill issue down the street either.
All right, so. All right, so a couple of things, just to kick off our discussion of this, because it's very, very important. The reopening of the Southwest Broward Regional Landfill, is that what they call BIC now?
BIC, it's, that's what it is.
Is an existential threat to the city of Pembroke Pines. That's all there is to it. And it is a threat to our property values. It's a threat to our quality of life. It is a threat. And not so much, though, if it's going to be collecting more construction debris. Not so much if they're going to be collecting vegetative yard waste. But if they're going to be collecting residential rotting garbage, that is a problem. I am Vice, Vice Chair of the Broward County Planning Council. And October twenty second, on October twenty seventh, twenty twenty two, this issue was put in front of us, October of twenty twenty two. And I made the following motion when an attempt to amend the land use plan was made by a Major Carter, garbage Carter, who does business in garbage. And they wanted an expansion of Monarch. And I made the following motion. Because staff at the planning council, and rightfully so, said this is consistent with the land use plan because we have garbage landfills in Broward County. This was my motion. While we find no technical fault with staff's recommendation, as a matter of urban planning essential to the implementation of effective land use planning, we cannot recommend expansion of any landfill facilities with Broward, within Broward County at this time. That received the unanimous yes. And the reason was we didn't yet have, even in October of twenty twenty two, it was late, we still didn't have a report on what the heck they wanted to do with the garbage. And I dare say we don't have one today. And I, I heard, the last I heard was that they were going to come up with something in August of this year.
Master plan.
Let's, let's hope that the, and is that a draft or a final?
Supposed to be, they've alleged, if I may, Mayor, in the, in the lawsuit, they've alleged it'll be delivered in August of twenty five.
So what we were saying to Broward County was you shouldn't do anything until and unless you get the report from these folks to tell you what steps are necessary to take. Shouldn't do anything yet. Keep, keep, keep doing what you're doing because you must. The garbage has got to go somewhere. But don't get involved in this. Somehow it came up again. And I just wanted to, I just want to reiterate for the record because somebody will be watching this tape. My relationships with all nine of the Broward County Commissioners is sterling. That wasn't always the case. It happens to be the case now. I get along with every single one of them. I have great respect for every single one of them. They had no business voting in favor of, of doing anything with landfills until they had a, a, a master plan. Because they don't know, you can't do the fine strokes on a canvas before the broad strokes are applied. It just doesn't work that way. And I don't know why they did that. But if Coconut Creek is in a situation that we hopefully will never be in, we should be their friend. And if any other city is in the same position of, of having to deal with that very uncomfortable situation of a landfill being reopened, we should be their friend. So my position is if, if sending you and the manager to these meetings sends a signal that we're a little bit concerned, I, I would even, I, I, I wouldn't mind taking an additional step. The reopening of that landfill down the block from us that to garbage that would rot, that is an existential threat to the city of Pembroke Pines, and it may not be allowed. And that's all there is to it. They have to come up with another answer. And incineration is not that answer. We need to stop thinking about this. That group hired a, a, a.
Consultant.
Yes.
Solid Waste Authority.
Okay, and I've still not met them, but they hired the best people. The best people should come up with the best answers. And the best answers are not incineration and let's reopen the, the landfill in Pembroke Pines. That can't be the answer. So we have to be on guard. We have to be, I think, if necessary, aggressive with this. Patient, respectful, but clear minded. That cannot be allowed to happen to us or to our neighbors. So we have to, we have to find a way to, to do that. And, and my, my, my recommendation to you all, my colleagues, is that we send our dogs to the meeting. Because they need to know that we're serious about it. And they need to know that we have our attorney and that we have our star manager there. And that's, that's my recommendation.
First time I, I heard that, sending our dogs.
Yeah, bite.
I agree. I, I'm obviously, just my view, nothing hurts, it doesn't hurt to send representatives to a meeting to listen in to what it is they're saying. I literally lived and breathed a lot of what happened down in Miami-Dade with the incinerator and the debate down there when I worked for the county mayor. And now afterwards, when I was doing television and analyzing the politics of garbage. It is an existential threat, not just to Pembroke Pines, but I think over the next five to 10 years, no matter who's running for governor, it's going to be one of the top issues. We're peninsula sticking out into the Atlantic and the Gulf of Mex, I guess we're Gulf of America now. I apologize, whatever it is called, whatever they want to name it, I don't care. I'm just saying, we have challenges in the state of Florida, whether you're landfilling, whether you are incinerating. I, I too was hoping that the Solid Waste Authority would have at least a draft of a report. I know some of the consultants that worked for them, not on the technical side, but on the communication side, because I worked with them in the past unrelated to any of this. But I, I'm very supportive of sending Mr. Dodge and Mr. Goran and anyone else that, from their team that they should, that they feel should go, including Mr. Stam. Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, so I, I, I'm, I'm really happy to hear some of the comments being made. You know, everything that the attorney was speaking to, you know, sounds like a lot of legal stuff. And, you know, you kind of sometimes listen and you go, yeah, it sounds important, but you really don't understand everything that he's saying. This is such an important issue that we actually are probably behind the eight ball right now. So let me put the, put the issue in, in perspective. So when we talk about first and foremost, the land use, right? So they went at Broward County. They said, we want a land use change. And basically, they took away the opportunity to have a incinerator there. They call it electrical generation. Is that correct, Mr. Stam?
There were two land use plan amendments. One of them was a 24 acre land use plan amendment. And that's kind of the terminology they utilized.
Yeah, so they have a 24 acre site that's dedicated to an incinerator. So now the, through, through the action that they took, the incinerator is now removed from that landfill. There's already a landfill there. And so that is an important fact to us because, if I may ask, Mr. Stam, how many, how many locations in Broward County are, have a land use for an incinerator?
Commissioner, that's a tough question. I can tell you that currently there's, the land use is a little bit trickier there because the land use is different in both locations. There are two locations that have zoning that allow landfills, which is the A six zoning, one being the BIC facility and one being Monarch Hill. The, the facility on 441 in Davie is actually a PUD. So it's a little bit different. I'm not aware of any other facilities where landfill could occur. I have not reviewed the complete PUD for the facility at 441 in Davie.
So generally speaking, there's only, there were only three locations where an incinerator could be built. One is at the Monarch Field that's been removed. The other one is the, the facility that's right there at 595 and 95, right? Or 441, right?
441.
And that's already at capacity. There are actually double capacity there, so only burning half of what's going there. And the only other place in all of Broward County that is, that has a land use for an incinerator is the BIC. And I will tell you, I've seen the plans for an incinerator cited on that, on that BIC. So them taking away that land use then becomes an issue of, and we had a conversation about the comprehensive plan. Does it, does it interfere with their comprehensive plan? I, I know that we only talked yesterday and I can talk to you later today.
Commissioner, so the local, I want to make two quick separations. When we're dealing with land use, that's directly related to the comprehensive plan. But very often zoning policies, zoning changes, get evaluated against the comprehensive plan. It's my understanding, talking to my colleagues from Coconut Creek, that when the zoning went before the local planning agency at Broward County, they made a recommendation that it was not consistent with the comprehensive plan.
Staff?
They made the, the, the zoning. And I need to separate those two uses because you have, you have to look at them in two separate carts. The land use at both locations is, has similarities but differences at the same time, as we discussed yesterday. There's even a residential component, I told you, at Monarch Hill, which is the lake, actually. The bigger issue, and I'm trying to hopefully be able to answer this, is that previously, when these changes took place at Monarch Hill, they did zoning change, they did, they did variances to get additional height and capacity. This time, they made a change wholesale to the zoning, to the text, to allow more height.
I want to get there, but I just, I'm just, just kind of just focused on if you don't have the land use, can't have the zoning.
Correct.
Correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm, I just want to just, okay, so it, so we'll have more conversation about the comprehensive plan. I don't want to confuse things.
Yeah.
So the bottom line is, loss of land use means you can no longer cite there. So there's only two locations in all of Broward County that has a site for an incinerator. One's being used and the other is in our backyard. No, they don't. Where, wait, wait, oh, I'm sorry, at BIC?
No, at, in Davie.
No, you don't.
There's footprint there for, for two more others if they need it.
Okay. So let's hope that's the case, right? But it's a whole lot easier to take a brand new burn facility and build it than to try to retrofit a 50-year-old burn facility, trust me. So I, I can tell you, though, you're, you're right, Mr. Mayor. But we are now, with the loss of that land use, impacted with a bigger eye on the BIC for an incineration. The second issue is the zoning. And the zoning is even probably more problematic for us. And, and we probably could have been with Coconut Creek and Deerfield at the time that they were making those attempts. And Mr. Mayor, really, thank you for what you did because it is known that the planning council, you know, denied this. And yet the, the county commission, you know, for their reasons, you know, chose to, to move forward. And it was not unanimous, by the way. You know, I think it was a majority vote. I think it was a five, three or something like that. On the commission, right. And, and that zoning is super detrimental to us because what it did was it took the height of a landfill from 125 feet to 325 feet. So if you ever go driving by Turnpike and you see that landfill there on the Turnpike, just imagine that being three times that size in height.
The Hard Rock Guitar is 425, just to play them personally.
Commissioner Good, the, Commissioner Good, the, I actually talked to them today. The, the current landfill is about 228 feet. So another 100 feet tall on top of what, that's what's allowed now, which would happen in our backyard.
But the change, okay, thank you for that. But the change in the zoning was from 125 to 325.
And as I mentioned, what was interesting, I didn't know how they got the height that they got there today at Monarch.
Through variance.
They did a variance, which only was site specific.
I heard that, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, but it's still, it changed us from 125 to 325. So that is definitely, maybe it might not be, you know, within the next couple of years, but it certainly at some point in time could be a huge impact to us because this is how things happen, little bites at a time that you don't even know. And this is the time that we probably need to at least be aware of what, what's going to take place next here. You know, if they were able to change the land use at the Monarch to remove the incinerator, why can't they use that same mechanism to remove the land use of an incinerator at our facility, at the BIC? For a step we should be thinking of. And then when it comes to height, yeah, I understand that it is only permitted for what they call Class One, which is, you know, debris, you know, demolition debris and vegetation. But they are still zoned and can easily permit to a Class Three, which is garbage. And they, if you listen to what Waste Management was speaking to in regards to asking for that height and width expansion, they were talking in terms of time, that they're going to run out of time in order to be able to continue to use that facility. They didn't say where they're looking at next. But listen, it's, the cards are on the table.
Yep.
We can see it all. And as the mayor said, we should be like 100% clear, letting them know that, you know, some of this might not, might not be a responsible move for, you know, environmental future for our city in particular. So I, I agree that we should be there, Mr. Mayor. But I also think, is this allowing elected officials to participate too? I mean, what, I, when, when the mayor says the attorney and the city manager go, and a 164 typically uses the elected officials, where does that, do, are we able to go? Is that what we're seeing here?
Mayor's bad, Mayor. The answer is it's a public meeting, number one. Number two is participation is limited. The reason being is, is that, without getting into the legal details on, on the record, we're not an affected party yet.
Right.
We are an interested party, but that doesn't give you legal standing in the proceedings yet. I think that going to the meeting, and you're allowed to go to the meeting, and I don't know who's going to actually allow or disallow conversation, the way it sounded to me. It sounded like it would be, again, it's the, it's the conflict assessment phase to determine what's the beef, what's the possible resolution, where do we go from here? Certainly, public officials have a right to be there. Mr. Dodge and I, our presence is, is to analyze, evaluate, measure where we are and then then report back to you as to what role this city might choose to play in the context of this litigation, with the Chapter 120 proceeding currently pending, or some other separate independent action, hypothetically, but to preserve all your rights. We kind of go in there with all due respect as Switzerland, but as an interested party because we happen to have a landfill down the street. And I think that needs to be said to those people who either probably need to listen.
And it's also why I felt so strongly about the regulation that we did pass, the change with respect to water and sewer service. If it was a noxious use to the city of Pembroke Pines outside of our city limits, we won't provide it. And luckily, we, we got that done. But whatever it is that can be done to obstruct the possibility of, of an incinerator at, at our location, we should do. And if, and if there are others who are struggling with, with the same issue, we should find a way to join them. I just feel that's what we should do. Anyone else on this? Okay.
Well, a question, not a comment. Is this?
Is this, since the nature of the meeting, it's not televised. In other words, you want to know what's going on, you need to be there.
Yes.
Okay.
You got enough?
Motion would be helpful, Mr. Mayor, to direct the manager and the attorney to attend.
So moved.
On behalf of the city.
Moved by Commissioner Schwartz, their second. Second by the vice mayor. Any discussion? Any from the public? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you all very much for the time and attention, appreciate it.
Thank you very much. Commission items. Commissioner Schwartz, uh, item nineteen, you're recognized.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. It'll be, um, it'll be two short ones. Um, I just need to get staff to unlock the left side so I can play a quick video. Vice Mayor.
He wants a quick video. Who's playing the video?
No, I got it. I, I don't want to start until the vice mayor's ready.
Vice Mayor?
Yes.
Yes. Go ahead.
So there was a discussion, uh, at the, at the last commission meeting, uh, about how, um, Raising Positive Children got started. And I did a little bit of research, provided some information, and I look forward to having the public, uh, join all of us, uh, next Tuesday. So I'm going to go ahead and load this up here. And there is sound, so hopefully it goes through. Okay, so here's the open file. Okay, here we go. I gotta do it on my side here. Okay. Hold on one second. I gotta slide this over as well. All right, says, uh, Mr. Keford saying that the format's not supported. It's an M P three. Open with, I want to try Media Player, see if that works. Yeah, there, nope, encoded in a format not supported. All right, so that was both, um... Let me try Windows Media Player.
So can you tell, can you tell us about it?
No, no, it speaks for itself, Mayor. Um, it's not, it's not my words, it's others. I'm gonna try it like this here on Windows. Okay, let's see if we got it here.
While they, uh, while they assist you, do you want to get to, uh, one of your, your next item? Uh, maybe we can just, while they fix the editor?
Yeah, Mr. Keford, if you can get, uh, give me some help on this side. Um, I'm going to move over to the next item while that's trying to be processed. Um, it's my pleasure this evening to welcome Barbara Parlevickia Ordus, who is going to speak up on an item that, um, can impact any of us. Uh, it impacted my family. Um, I'm sure you know people in your lives who it's impacted yours.
Your name and address for the record?
The floor is yours.
Yes, thank you, thank you very much, Barbara Ordus, Barbara Parlevickia Ordus, one one seven three Northwest one twenty-two Terrace, Pembroke Pines, Florida.
You're recognized.
We recognize and discuss the awareness months such as opioid abuse month, diabetes awareness month, mental health issues, American Heart Association. I would like to bring forward alcohol abuse awareness month, and that's what April is for. Since April nineteen eighty-seven, the National Council on Alcohol, excuse me, and Drug Dependency, Inc. has sponsored Alcohol Abuse Awareness Month to increase public awareness and understanding and to reduce the stigma of alcoholism and alcohol-related issues. The N C A D D encourages people to participate by wearing red ribbons and becoming more involved by speaking to groups and organizations within their community about the effects of alcohol. Alcohol is the most common substance used among people twelve years old and up. About a hundred and seventy-eight thousand people die from excessive drinking each year. The N C A D D highlights the importance of seeking help for those who are struggling with alcoholism and alcohol-related issues. This organization promotes, promotes resources such as rehabilitation programs and support groups like Alcoholic Anonymous. There are very clear signs to determine if someone might be an alcoholic. There are different types of alcoholics. One, there's the social drinker. Social drinkers primarily consume alcohol in social settings, in parties and/or gatherings. The functioning alcoholic, the functioning subtitle maintains its daily responsibilities while regularly consuming alcohol in excess. The binge-eating alcoholic, some alcoholics binge eat after consuming alcohol, which could lead to unhealthy weight gain and other health issues. The binge drinker consume large amounts of alcohol, also, often resulting in memory lapse and poor decision-making. The chronic severe alcoholic subtitles are characterized by compulsive need to drink daily, experiencing without withdrawal. The high-functioning alcoholic, this is an alcoholic that maintains successful careers and personal lives while concealing their alcohol dependence. Problem drinkers display nervousness, anxiety, react offensively if anyone questions their drinking habits, and have difficulty sitting still for long periods of time or maintaining focus. They often drink alone or in secret. There's a real denial and lack of acknowledgement about the situation. Since they could still function at work and in social settings, they convince themselves that there is no issue and believe they are not bad as other alcoholics. Alcohol, alcoholism affects the body in many ways. It can impair judgment, memory, decision-making. It increases anxiety, depression, the risk of mental disorders, and can lead to blackouts and long-term cognitive decline. Alcoholism causes severe liver damage, cirrhosis, hepatitis. It raises blood pressure, it weakens heart muscles, and often leads to a lot of weight gain, especially in the belly area. Alcohol abuse can also lead to family disorders and abusive relationship. Whether personal or work-related relationships, it can affect either one. I have been a proud volunteer, sponsor, and board member of Here's Help since nineteen ninety-nine. We're a substance abuse facility. I was there early this morning with Chrissy Kruger. We're going to be having a, a nice segment on it Wednesday, uh, five-thirty at night. They are, uh, news station. Here's Help is not your typical alcohol and drug rehabilitation center. While most programs focus solely on traditional therapy and sitting in meetings all day long, Here's Help's approach is different. And I welcome each and every one of you sitting up there to come visit. It's amazing what Footy and Sammy Zaco have created down there.
I have, it is amazing.
They help young people discover talents, passions, and their potential they never knew they had. There's a belief in healing through process and community and not just sobriety. The organization offers outpatient and residential treatment programs where individuals can live with us in a supportive, structured environment while receiving treatment. In addition to helping adults, Here's Help also offers programs that target at-risk youth. And I do hope, I'd like to stop right here for one second. I do hope our charter schools, our schools in Pembroke Pines, know that we're so close. We have the greatest program ever that I've ever witnessed, and I've witnessed several of these, um, substance abuse facilities. They have a strong case management program and offer help to individuals to navigate the recovery process and to assist in reintegrating them back into society after treatment. How very fortunate we are to have such a program and organization in our community that provide this much-needed help to our families. We use different lighting colors in our city-owned buildings to designate months of awareness. Red is the most commonly-used color for alcohol abuse awareness. I would like to suggest that we add the month of April as Alcohol Abuse Awareness Month in the city of Pembroke Pines and shine red lights on our city-owned buildings. I hope this can be go-out as a vote and be a unanimous vote by the commission to do so. Thank you, thank you for your time, and I do hope you come visit us at Here's Help.
Barbara, thank you for your years of service of helping those who can't help themselves.
Personally.
It's, um...
I just want to say, I've been to another, uh, my son Jerry, he's now, unfortunately, he's in another rehab. I went down there and I said, what a joke this place is compared to Here's Help. At Here's Help, we actually make their addiction behind them, make them look forward. We have art classes, graphic design. I even have them doing greeting cards right now. The hardest thing for anybody to do is go pick Merry Christmas out to somebody who's in prison. So, we're designing our own cards down there, trying to sell them and do other things. You'll see a good segment on Channel ten news.
So I want to thank you for coming forward.
Thank you.
I think this is terrific. I don't think a vote is necessary, I'm happy to do it.
Thank you.
Uh, and, uh, ask the group to, uh, to send me the language and starting next April and going forward, uh, that's what we'll do. And I think that that's great. Uh, I get, I get requests all the time, as, uh, as Frank did, to, uh, to make proclamations and declarations and all kinds of, uh, of things, and I'm always happy to do it.
Thank you. And I'm just trying to carry on as we know that our dear John Cross Footy...
How's he doing?
Uh, every day he forgets a little bit more.
Yeah.
It's sad. But I take him to the casino, he has...
The only shame about the...
He does remember how to play video poker, which is amazing. I took him with five hundred dollars and he came home with sixteen thousand five hundred. So somehow, the brain works when he's playing poker, God bless him.
I only wish it was in Pembroke Pines. He's a little bit far away from us, I'd love to see...
It's not, it's not. You just go right down Douglas.
No, I know, I know.
It's just south of the stadium.
What I was, what I was saying is, I, I would have loved to see it at the, uh, at the Howard Foreman, something like that at the Howard Foreman. Uh, every community should have a, um, a residential rehab and an outpatient, uh, alcohol and substance abuse program. It's necessary, it's just necessary.
It definitely is.
And, uh, um, we don't have one that I am aware of in Pembroke Pines, and we really should think about that, Mr. Dodge, as to whether or not, um, we can attract a group to, to join us in, um, uh, at the Howard Foreman, it would be a perfect location for it. And, uh, and the need in our community is, uh, is as strong as in any other community.
I hope you look at the footprint of Here's Help because I've never...
I've been there.
I've never seen anything.
His setup is, is beautiful, it's a campus. Usually, it's just the building on a corner. This is a campus, it's, uh, it's a school as well.
It is, State County.
He's got a radio station there, I mean, it's, it's amazing. And, uh, I'll never forget my tour there.
We're trying to do something new now also that I brought to the board, and that's to have them live with us six months after they graduate. Because I just feel, whether it be the prison system or a lot of these other facilities, we set them up for failure. Take them in for four months, put them back out on the street. A lot of times, the parents won't take them back in.
Yeah.
Let them stay with us six months, let them get a job, let them pay us, let them learn responsibility. Break the cycle, thank you.
I want to thank you for coming forward.
Thank you, Barb. That's the good stuff.
Your video ready?
Yeah, we're, we're good here, okay. So Keford ensures me that we have sound. So, um, one of the proudest moments, um, seeing this, seeing this live, Mayor, um, sharing that moment with you was something else. Uh, the Florida League of Cities honored the city of Pembroke Pines for something that, um, uh, that we're going to continue on Tuesday. I need sound, uh, in the back there, please. I'm turned all the way up on my side. Try it again.
Commissioner, do you want to defer this, uh, to the next meeting?
Well, certainly, we're going to let the crew in the back work on the sound system here. I want to move to the next item, Mayor, if I could. Um, this one here, um, discussion possible action to create a digitized board application process for the purposes of efficiency effectiveness and ease of use. Applications would be active for a set period of time and allow non-selected applications the opportunity to remain on file for a period determined by ordinance set by the city commission. Um, colleagues, it is a, a process for the clerk's office to go through, um, the, the phone books of files that have been there for a very long time. We, we have, um, you can keep talking and I'll keep moving here. Gotcha, that's probably what happened, okay. Um, the, um... I, I spoke with, uh, Matt Keford, who is, gotta be the best I T guy we've had since yesterday, right, Matt? Um, says it's, it's a, it's a very, it's a seamless process. Basically, we would, we would utilize, um, what's on, uh, on our website already. Uh, the applications would go into an Excel file, and then the clerk can search, just like that, all applications for a specific board. And it's going to make it a whole lot easier for us to get the information that we need uh, by district, citywide, that sort of thing. So, uh, the reason why I, I'm, I'm bringing this up is we have applications that I've gone through where people are either no longer interested, or they've moved, or there's been a change. Um, we just need to get this thing up to twenty twenty-five to make it easy for our residents to apply, make it easy for us to review, and give the clerk the opportunity to be just a little bit more, uh, less labor-intensive. Uh, because it's really unfair to them that we haven't changed this process since nineteen eighty-two. Uh, so the, the ability for them to upload a resume is still good. Uh, again, Mr. Keford, uh, committed to that. And, uh, it could be up and running as, as soon as we say yes, and give them about a week to, to work with the clerk's office. Um, we've had some applications in the past that we've, um, uh, commission has appointed, but the application that's actually in the backup isn't actually for the board itself that they got appointed to. And so I want to avoid that going forward. Uh, and I think just bringing everything up to speed, up to date, and this is what the greatest thing about it. Whatever time period we set, um, let's say a year, uh, it's good for a year. Thirty days before it expires, that applicant will get an email from the clerk's office, say, listen, thank you so much, you have an application on file. We just want to know if you want to continue to leave it on file.
Madam Clerk, what do you, what are your thoughts on, uh, on this? Does, do you have any problem with this? It seems harmless enough.
Uh, no, I spoke with the I T director too, and he has a way of uploading the, uh, form electronically. Um, and then whether we get the application at the same time, that we have to work out all of that.
I mean, I like the idea of having, uh, uh, an application online, so long as they can scan a document in there, their resume, and then it comes to you, um, um, and then it, it becomes available. I don't know about a timeframe for, because then you've got to make people reapply, they already applied and they hadn't been selected, I don't, I'm, I'm less sure about that. But I like the idea, I like the idea of, of digitizing the, the board, the board application process. There will be some people who would prefer to write it out. And, uh, if, uh, um, if that's the case, I would like to give them that option, you know? But I, I have no problem with, uh, I, you know, uh, if they, if they, if you all can figure it out and it's no big deal and we're not spending, uh, a million dollars on it, you know, I'm, I'm all for it. and we're not spending a million dollars on it, you know, I'm all for it. And I mean, that's my view.
I actually have one question. Is it required to have an application for a commissioner to appoint somebody to a board?
Yes.
That is, that's in there?
Yes. It's in the code.
And they have to submit a resume.
Okay, so do we limit them to the number of boxes they could check off?
No.
In regards to, okay.
No, and then it's our sovereign as district or as mayor. We have the sovereign decision as far as who we want to.
And they don't have to check off the box for the committee you appointed to. They can, the question, the way the question is framed is, which ones are interested, are you interested in? And they pick what boxes they want. But that doesn't mean that you don't have an interest in them in something else. And so.
Because it's just a preference.
It's just a preference. It's to give, it's to give the appointing official an idea of what they're interested in.
Can we suggest that just in case for our clerk to double-check the address in the district? Sometimes people just don't know what district they're in and they file, they put it in there. And we've gotten a couple of them in which it's incorrect district. So ideally, we double-check whatever is inputted into the form. And when it is sent to us, I would like to see a correct district on it. It doesn't make too much sense for us, for every application, to look through, to look over the address.
We've gotten applications from other cities.
Yes. Qualified candidates just because they don't live here.
So, you know, I think that's important. Okay, anything else?
No, so.
Consensus? I think it's a great idea.
Okay.
Is your video ready?
I believe we solved the magic of the noise here.
Okay.
All right, so here we go. And if this doesn't work, we're going to adjourn. Come on now.
2019 Florida Municipal Achievement Award winners. The winners of these prestigious awards have demonstrated innovation, creativity, and excellence in municipal services. The 2019 City Spirit Municipal Achievement Award goes to the city of Pembroke Pines for its Raising Positive Children program.
This started actually about.
So the video's actually stuck. So bear with me here. I have a YouTube backup.
2019 Florida Municipal Achievement Award winners.
Give me a second here. So staff, I'm going to move my, this YouTube over. If you could help me with that, and then we can call tonight, okay?
Do you want to do this next meeting?
No, actually, I want to be able to do this because we have the event. There we go. I got it here. Okay, here we go. It's going to run for two minutes here. Thank you.
The winners of these prestigious awards have demonstrated innovation, creativity, and excellence in municipal services. The 2019 City Spirit Municipal Achievement Award goes to the city of Pembroke Pines for its Raising Positive Children program.
This started actually about three years ago when we formed an education roundtable that brought in all the principals and staff of any of the schools located in the city of Pembroke Pines in order to bring about discussion on ideas and how we can help each other.
And their platform was simple. We were looking at the well-being of our students within the city of Pembroke Pines and within our community. And as we started to meet, a recurring theme was bubbling to the top, which was some issues dealing with our teens and death by suicide and the rising concern around that.
One of the biggest issues that came about was cyberbullying and how that led to low self-esteem and how that then brought about suicide and the issues that were following. So that stuck with us so hard.
So our parent stakeholders and our community at large kept asking for more of these sessions because we were directly addressing an issue within our city with our children. And they kept asking for more events. So we've completed our fourth and working on our fifth.
And I can't say how proud we are to be awarded the Florida League of Cities City Spirit Award for 2019. I can't be more proud of my city for taking the lead on an issue that is hitting home with everybody, everybody we talk to. And again, thank you, Florida League of Cities, for recognizing the city of Pembroke Pines.
Thank you, Mayor. The, all those presentations, I want to thank. Oops, hold on there. Hold on, don't, don't, no, no, no. Don't do that now. We don't want to do that one. Okay. We don't want to do that one tonight. We can take this one off now. Go and kill the screen. Oh goodness. Anyway, the, thank you, staff. I want to thank staff for their incredible creativity and work product. I put sequentially all of the events. I think I'm probably most proud of during COVID and the virtual. We, initially, it was a quarterly event and then they shrunk it down and it got shrunk down again. But managing parent burnout is something I think we can all appreciate. So it's been about the kids, now it's about the parents on Tuesday. So I'm looking forward to it. And I want to thank the administration for the digital advertising. And please note that this is, this goes beyond the walls of our charter school system. The creation of this was to reach every child in the city, regardless of what school they went to, to reach out to every family, regardless of what school their child attends. And I'm hopeful that going forward, that we're able to continue to grow this program and have other cities emulate what we're doing because we're just going to be a better community for it. So with that, Mayor, thank you.
Yeah, I'm disappointed that we didn't have one for all of last year. And I can't blame City Manager Dodge for.
We had one last year, sir. We had one and it was in, it's on there. We actually had one in February of last year.
No, I meant from May to forward. And I can't blame City Manager Dodge and for the schools to say that this just needs to be a school thing. We need to de-politicize these events and to.
How is it political, sir?
Well, ask them. They're the ones that told us. So.
Say again?
They are the ones that made the determination. These are going to be school events. No one on this commission is going to have anything to do with it anymore. It's no longer going to be so-and-so commissioner invites you and that kind of thing. This is a Pembroke Pine school event, and we should support them with our attendance, and that's about it. So anything else for tonight? Thank you, we're adjourned. Yeah, absolutely.